Hey, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Trustees' meeting. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join in a moment of silence for our fallen servicemen and women. Thank you. All right, we'll begin tonight with the Oath of Office for one police officer joining. Commissioner Jackson, would you like to do the introduction?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm happy to announce our newest officer, Officer James Brennan. James Brennan's from Deer Park. He graduated from Deer Park High School. He's also a graduate of Armidale State College. And he joined the New York City Police Department in 2018 where he was assigned to the 107th precinct, where he just completed six years of service. He's now a fine member of this department. He's looking forward to further his career in law enforcement, and we're happy to have him.
Thank you. Come on up for the Oath of Office. Raise your right hand. All right, I state your name.
I, James Brennan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the laws and ordinances of the Village of Garden City.
And the laws and ordinances of Garden City.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of a police officer with the Garden City Police Department.
The duties of a police officer in the Garden City Police Department.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
By the powers vested in me as mayor of the Village of Garden City, I declare you duly appointed.
Thank you very much.
Trustee Trino, do you want to join for a picture? And then we'll do a family shot. Stay in the middle.
Okay.
I stay in the middle so people come over.
Just jump over the chairs.
All right. At this point, we'll move on to the quick resident comments, no more than one minute each. Limit of 30 minutes, and this is an item we have on here for residents who have come to the meeting but need to leave. They're unable to stay for the meeting but would like to tell us something quickly. So if there's anyone in the room who will not be able to stay for the meeting but would like to come up to the podium to make a quick comment, you can do that now. All right, we don't have any quick comments. I don't know if it really applies to Zoom since people are home. So we'll move on now to comments by department heads, and we'll begin with Mr. Barone.
Good evening, Mayor. Board of Trustees. I'll be covering seven items on the agenda this evening. I'd like to direct your attention to Item 1B. It's a request to transfer $21,104.25, which is needed to cover purchases of hydrogen peroxide that is used in the AOP treatment process. Item 1C is a request to transfer $21,002 from contingent for building maintenance repairs of the tollhouse. The cost includes replacement of the existing interior and exterior lights with new LED lights, the installation of three new line voltage smoke and carbon monoxide detectors, which is required by code in the building department, and the complete maintenance service of the HVAC system. Our HVAC vendor found vermin living inside the outside condenser unit and found wires that were chewed through, damaged, and need repair. Item 1D is a request to transfer $12,775 from contingent to repair the power pit wall and lintels of the park's department garage bays. The power pit wall and lintels are failing and need to be repaired. Under Public Works, Item Number 10 is a request to approve a change order in the amount of $42,262.50 for the Clayton Road blower replacement project. This change order is required to furnish and install an additional control panel for the two new blowers. The control panel is needed to update the existing electrical safety control panel in order to make it compatible with the new blower units. Item 11 is a request to approve a change order in the amount of $55,285 for Pratt Brothers to repave Stewart Avenue at nighttime. Paving work is not typically performed at nighttime on village roads and is not included in our paving contract. The alternative option is to perform the roadwork during the day, which would require closing Stewart Avenue from Clayton Road to Franklin Avenue. In my opinion, this is not really a viable option as it would create substantially increased traffic on Clayton and Franklin, cause major traffic delays, and negatively impact response time for first responders. Item Number 12 is a request to approve two change orders for statewide roofing. It's part of the Waterworks Roof Replacement Project. The first change order in the amount of $12,757 is to install a new roof hatch and access ladder in a new location. The second change order in the amount of $18,677.33 is to install new Litzco aluminum wall panels along the wall that separates the lower roof from the upper roof. Item Number 13 is a request to accept the maintenance bond in the amount of $816,923.4 for the Village Wall HVAC project. Acceptance of this bond guarantees work for 18 months from the date of acceptance. Village Council has reviewed and approved the maintenance bond as to form. Item Number 14 is a request to transfer $160,000 and to create a new capital project called Street Lighting System Improvements. This funding is required in order to install new street lighting along the Clayton Road corridor from Commercial Avenue to Meadow Street ahead of the county's reconstruction project. We are using the capital project account that is to be created at the start of a new fiscal year to upgrade street lighting on roads in conjunction with our road paving projects. And finally, Item 15 is a request to reject the low bidder for the water main replacement on Clayton Road as the low bidder did not meet specifications and to award the water main replacement project to Bank of Construction at a cost of $2,888,305. This project is to replace the water main on Clayton Road from Osborne Road to Old Country Road. Due to the aging infrastructure, the section of water main was previously identified as needing replacement and was planned to be replaced in the near future. Coordinating this work with the Nassau County Resourcing Project reduces the overall cost of restoring the road on this project. Funding for this project is subject to a permissive referendum. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Mr. Barone, with regard to, I'm sorry, my mic. Thank you, ma'am. With regard to the upcoming work on Stewart Ave., can you just give us and the residents an idea of timing? When you expect they might start and how long the project might take?
We are tentatively on the schedule to begin milling the week of the 20th. I'm talking with the contractor. Hopefully, we could get in there a little bit sooner. We are scheduled to be mostly completed with the paving work prior to the start of the cricket tournament, which is approximately June 3rd.
June 3rd, thank you. And then just one other quick one with regard to timing. Or no, I'm sorry, 16, the lighting. Will that go in? It sounds like it will go in before the paving work. How about any other village work? I know that you're doing the massive piping.
Correct, this is the current water main project, which is happening right now. After the water main project, most likely after National Grid is done, we'll come in and do our street lighting along the corridor.
Good, and that is within the next couple of months?
I think that would be fair.
Great, thank you very much.
I'll just ask, as far as the change order for the road repaving, is there any reason that wasn't anticipated initially when it was bid out?
We just don't typically do nighttime paving work within our contract. And we were debating whether or not to do it during the day or not, so if we were to include this cost, it may up the cost of the other items in the contract. So therefore, we left it out while bidding, and we're addressing it now.
And is that what Commissioner Jackson, if you spoke with Commissioner Jackson, are you recommending it be done at night, that paving for the additional costs there?
Mayor, yes, I would recommend it at night. A lot less traffic at night, and daytime needs to be picking up, and I think it'll be a good idea. Especially if it does extend past June 3rd, I think we will be maybe caught in a little bit of quagmire, so I agree.
Thank you.
John, I got a couple of questions for you there. On those aluminum panels, can you just let me know on the board and the residents listening, what those aluminum panels are for? Just in a kind of a layman's sense?
Sure, so the new roofing system has insulation that's being installed at a greater thickness than what was there, which resulted in the roofing being installed higher than a couple of windows that were over there. And the TPO roofing curved up and went over to the upper roof. So in order to waterproof the wall and to improve aesthetics, instead of looking at a white TPO roof, these will be, you know, brown color to match similar to the building and the aesthetics of the area, aluminum paneling, that'll look very nice.
Great, so basically, this is an additional flashing detail on the exterior to make up for the difference in the height?
That's correct.
Okay, just wanted to check on that. And on the other note, is the night, the paving at night, which is obviously a great idea because they're on a traffic on Stewart and stuff like that. It would be a huge, huge issue with traffic during the daytime. At nighttime, for the people who live on Stewart Avenue, we know we're going to get this question. How much noise is there going to be? I know that's a tough question to answer. But how much noise in regards to people sleeping at nighttime and hearing these big machines laying down an enormous amount of pavement, you know? Again, tough question to answer, but I know people are probably like, oh, my God, I'm going to have to listen to this paving machine going up and down for the next. How long do you think as well that process is going to take at nighttime?
If I had to categorize it at a low, moderate, or high, I would classify this as moderate. The houses are set back, you know, quite a decent way from the road. The construction does move progressively up and down the block, so it won't be all night right in front of someone's house directly. It'll be kind of moving down the block. And milling is expected to take two to three nights, and paving, two to three nights is the same, so approximately about six nights.
So when you say the word milling to the average person, you're talking about the machine that grinds about two inches of the road. That's probably the loudest, dustyest part of the job, right?
I don't know about it. Yeah, I would say that's probably accurate, but while we're paving, we also have vibratory rollers which make vibrations, so it's probably less than the milling machine, but yeah, I would agree with that.
Yeah, just to get a general sense, you know what I mean? So how long do you think overall this nighttime work, how many days are we talking about? How many weeks are we talking about for this work at nighttime?
It sounds like approximately two weeks.
Oh, two weeks, okay, great. Thanks, John. Appreciate it as always. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barone. Ms. Will?
Good evening.
I'm sorry, my microphone's off. Thank you, Mr. Barone. Ms. Will.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Item Number 1A, under the Finance Department, is a request to transfer $2100 to tax advertising from contingency. This is a result of an increase in costs for legal notices in the Garden City News. Item E, 1E, is a request to transfer $145,000 to the Recreation Capital Project Account for equipment. As you recall, Mr. Blake applied for a CREST grant, which was approved. So we need to fund this purchase of the van first and then seek reimbursement from the grant. So this is a transfer, but we'll be getting reimbursement from the grant. Item Number 2 is a request to pass a resolution to transfer unpaid water bills to our tax rolls. As of today, the amount that's being assessed, that's transferred to the tax rolls with penalty, is $236,017, which accounts for seven, it's representative of 786 water accounts. Item Number 3 is a request to pass a resolution to place unpaid commercial sanitation charges on the village's tax roll. As of today, the amount that will be assessed, including penalties, is $286, and it's just one account. As a comparison, there were no accounts last year. Item Number 4 is a request for the Board to pass bond resolutions as provided by Bonds Council. I do want to note that Item Number A, HVAC at the Waterworks Building, this bond resolution was approved by the Board at the April 1st meeting. However, because we didn't notice it in the papers, bless you. Because we did not publish a notice in the paper, we are now required to readopt this resolution. Items B through F are capital projects that were approved for the '24-'25 fiscal year, and Item G is related to Item Number 15 on the agenda. Item Number 5 are tax certiori settlements that have been outlined by Village Council, and we're requesting that the Board approve these settlements. And those are all the items on the agenda for finance tonight. Any questions?
Actually, the questions would be for DPW head Barone, related to the finance. The road and paving repairs, I presume we're going to get a lot of our roads that are pretty beat up with that resolution, including the roads, although we're getting some reimbursement for the railroad, for the roads, streets that were damaged during the construction of the third track. Is that a correct assumption?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and the vehicles and equipment, just new vehicles and all equipment related to the department?
That's correct.
Okay. And just one fast question, Ms. Will, the amount of unpaid water rents, you said it was around $286. I didn't quite get that down.
Yes, and I placed the memo on your desks tonight. So the total assessed, including penalties, is $236,017. As a comparison, last year, it was $288,177, and it was a lot more unpaid water accounts last year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Will.
You're welcome.
Mr. Giavelli.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor. Board of Trustees. The building department doesn't have anything on the formal agenda this evening, but I just wanted to update the Board with regard to Edgemere Firehouse. I did speak with the architects and engineers this afternoon. Everything's progressing well. The chief and I have been dealing with correspondence back and forth with them, and they stated that they would have 90% completion drawings by the second week of June. So it's approaching, it's progressing, and hopefully, we can move forward with that project. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, just a quick question on that. The mechanical and electrical and plumbing drawings, they will be coming because, you know, we spoke a few weeks ago about that.
Yes, we'll see that on a 90% submission, and then we can make any minor changes that we need to make. And then the next phase after that is the 100% with the specifications and the cost estimate.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Giavelli. Mr. Blake?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Recreation has one item on the formal agenda tonight. It's number nine. We are asking authorization to approve a license agreement with Delphi University for the use of the Olmsted Theater for our dance showcase. This will be held a rehearsal on Wednesday, May 29th, two performances on Friday, May 31st, and Saturday, June 1st. The cost of this rental, which covers some of their staffing costs for operating some of the AV equipment in the theater, is $2,955. Funds are available in Recreation Special Activities Account, and Village Council has approved this agreement as to form. Other than that, one quick note, we are seeing a lot of requests about overgrown shrubs and hedges on sidewalks. And we are doing our due diligence, sending people out to check, and sending out notices to comply. Just like to ask all the residents that if they do come across a shrub that's overgrown, it's impeding the walkway, please let us know. We count on your eyes to see these things, and we do issue notices to correct. We've gotten good cooperation so far this year. Most of the people that were noticed have taken care of their shrubs. The ones that don't, we go out and we take care of it for them, and then they get billed back. So everybody, please, give us a hand on that. And that's all I have this evening. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Just one thing on the shrub. I think I recently heard a complaint on that, and we should probably push that out on social media because I think I've heard complaints so many times, and no one does anything about it. So maybe get that message out again to let people report on those shrubs.
Absolutely, and you know, the main thing is call our department, and we do send people. As Steve Barnes goes out every day, we had, I think, three today. So we're following up on them.
Do you want to share a little bit about the exciting upcoming recreation survey that's being done, the kickoff meeting on Tuesday?
I would encourage everybody to attend the kickoff meeting and come in and tell everybody what you love and what you don't like about our programs and our facilities. This is an opportunity to do a real hard, close look at our department and how we operate. We always think that we're doing well, but it always helps to have some fresh eyes come in and take a look and tell us, you know, you do a great job on these things, but it sure would be nice if we had some of this going on. The survey is extensive. It is extremely well done. I am very impressed with Branstadter Carroll. Their knowledge and their expertise is marvelous. Their willingness to listen is terrific, and I think we're going to get a wonderful job from them. So absolutely, everybody should come to that meeting.
Thank you.
Should we remind folks when it is?
That's coming. It's Tuesday, Tuesday, 5:30 to 8:30, open house format, so you can pop in anytime, before dinner, after dinner, pick up the kids and come by. Kids are welcome. We may even have a fun little guess the candies event going on there. So definitely bring the kids. It is recreation.
And it's being held at the casino.
At the Garden City Casino.
Garden City Casino. I almost made a boop.
The only casino in town.
Two items. One is on the Adelphi. I know it's a small amount of money, but with the difficulties, I will say, we have in terms of Adelphi and paying for facilities that they use of ours, I'm sort of surprised to see that they're asking that we pay for their facilities. Have we had conversations with them about?
This is actually a reduced rate. They're not charging us for use of the space. They're only charging us for their staff costs. We've asked if that can be waived, and so far the answer has been no.
I would encourage us to continue to push. It just seems unfair, right? That they get what they get and we don't.
I would agree with that. We have to negotiate a little more with them.
We can certainly do that.
Mayor, go ahead.
Yes.
Eva?
No.
Or you?
That's all right. My second point is I think it would be helpful for residents to point out that the meeting on Tuesday and the recreation survey is part of a broader initiative around St. Paul's, right? That there is a link between the work that we're doing for recreation, which is great, and will lead us in a lot of really interesting directions for recreation parks and culture that are often in terms in the village. But that is also a piece of, right? What the St. Paul's Committee is looking at. And we'll use that information to guide us in that direction.
Absolutely. You could call it a prelude to the final survey, which is going to include some recommendations on what might be a good fit into the St. Paul's building and what might be a good fit elsewhere on village property throughout the village. So absolutely, it is kind of a two-phase process.
Thank you. That's it.
Excellent. Paul, I've got a couple of things for you. The big topic, which my phone has been off the hook the last two or three weeks, you know what I'm going to say, is the lawn grass in town. People have been very upset about it. A lot of people furious about it, and rightfully so. It's never probably been seen in town before. And probably a lot of that's got to do with obviously switching from the existing company we had that did that to a new company. Can you let the residents, give them an update on when we can expect all the grass to be cut and get back to normal? And number two, how this happened, why it happened, and how we can guarantee the residents that it won't happen again?
Well, first off, Brightview, who has been in the village the last two days, they have been working mostly in the east. They are ready to get into the central section tomorrow. I'm sorry, the state section tomorrow. That is, of course, weather permitting. The forecast for the next few days is spotty. But we did have a meeting with them in our office Wednesday afternoon. And we have a schedule planned out. They are going to be following what the former contractor did pretty much every week, going east to west. The difference is that while the other contractor was here for a day or two days, they plan to be in the village four days a week. And the work is going to be done at a much higher level. And I think if you saw some of the work that's already been done, it's head and shoulders above what we were getting the last few years. The cutting is better. They are picking all the trash up before they cut. They are going slowly with their mowers, so the grass actually gets cut. It doesn't just get blown down. And they picked up a huge amount of branches today. They are holding to the contract. If anything, two inches or less has to be picked up. As to the delay in switching over to this company, it's simply a matter of documentation. The village has certain contract requirements that have to be fulfilled before the company can come in. They are sent the contract books with a letter explaining exactly what needs to be done. They were working on this. Unfortunately, some of the issues are that their headquarters or their regional headquarters is in Philadelphia. And some of the material that had to be signed, had to be signed by a vice president who was in Philadelphia. There's not a local representative to sign. That took a couple of days to get it down there, a couple of days to get it back. And when it came back, it was not complete. They had missed a few pages. They had missed a few things that were critical. We could not allow them to start. The paperwork had to go back. And it went back down to Philadelphia. It came back up. And as soon as we had it, Mr. Fishburg was good enough to give us the okay to start on some scanned documents and an email, and we got them going. This typically does not happen. Most of the companies are pretty good about getting contracts back per shot out of the box. You know, how it can be, will it happen again? It shouldn't. But, you know, anything can happen anywhere. I think the one thing that we can do is do a better job with the package that we send out and make sure that it's fully detailed as to everything that needs to be filled out. That seems to be a bit of an issue. But other than that, this is not untypical of onboarding a new vendor. Some of the things that we request, they're not used to doing. We request a stamped seal on documents, a raised stamped seal. They don't do that. They, they had to find their seal. They do everything now PDF. So, you know, a little bit of old school got in the way. But based on what I heard Wednesday, and my wife Karen said, going from one contract to another, we're kind of moving from little leagues to the major leagues. This is a much different company, a much different process. We had a team in the office of four people. They're going to work out well. They sat with our maintenance team of Sam Simone, Steve Barnish and Tom Gordon. And it was a really constructive meeting. And I know we're going to get a good job from them. So we apologize to the residents for the delay. It was certainly unforeseen. It's not something we like to do. My phone rang probably as much as yours did, trustee.
Yours rang a little bit more than mine.
It was no fun for anybody. But, you know, we're past it now. We've got them in the village. We know we're going to get a good job out of them. And I just ask everybody to bear with us the next two or three days, which unfortunately, the weatherman is not saying good things. But we're going to get a good job from these folks.
Great, Paul. Thanks so much on that. I appreciate that. Just a couple of other quick things on that front. So as a businessman myself, the one thing I would identify there is let's get the bids. We had all winter to get those bids. And then before the board, we saw those before the board on April 1st. Moving forward, going across the board in the village, let's try and give ourselves an extra month or two when we have it to get those bids to the board a couple of months earlier. Say February 1st as opposed to April 1st. Then we give ourselves that couple of months. So we're not in this pinch, again, with this company or any other company. That all new companies take some time to, you know, make adjustments and maybe don't get it right. Just give ourselves, overall, I talked to Ralph about this, just some time, extra time. Get it to the board a little bit earlier, get it approved a little bit earlier. So then you have a little bit more time to work out these kinks overall across the board. The last thing is, who is going to supervise this new company? Because new companies obviously need somebody, you know, really on their tail just to make sure the expectations are high. And obviously, they're doing a great job, just like you said they were.
Yeah. We are going to have our maintenance supervisor, Tom Gordon, who knows, is a resident, knows the village in and out, knows every little blade of grass that needs to be cut. And he's the liaison for Brightview. He was in the meeting with their crew the other day. He was out with them today, directing them around to some of the little hidden places that we have in the village. And with Tom on the job, I know we're going to get a good job.
Yeah, no, that's great. By the way, I see him in the corner over there.
He's smiling faces back there. I know he's.
So anyway, Paul, thank you very much. I appreciate that. Yeah. Yeah. Tom, thank you as well. Appreciate it. Thanks, guys. Thanks, Paul.
Our pleasure, trustee.
So a quick question, just a follow-up. So we know Brightview is doing the grass cutting and they also pick up garbage. So they come to us once a week? What's?
Brightview has a team onsite in the village. They told us they would be here most likely four days a week and some days five. Depends where they're cutting, how tall the grass is, what the weather is like. There are circumstances that go into this that don't allow us to say they'll be here three days or four days. It depends on circumstance.
And what are they contracted to do for us?
They're contracted to cut the grass, edge the grass and blow the clippings up. And twice a year, prune all the shrubs on village green space.
I think one thing we were talking about is seeding. Because with an outside company, sometimes they cut the edge and they don't really seed. After a few years, we see some bare spots. We see some areas that need some more attention. How can we address that?
We address that in-house. We have a hydro seeder that we take out a little bit later in the spring. And if we are, we are going to hydro seed this year, all of the streets with medians, we're going to be doing Fairmont, Oxford and Garden Street. And if we are told of bare spots while the hydro seeder is available, we will go out and hit all those spots. It's not an issue. We're happy to do that.
And if we see something, we call the number?
Just let us know. Pick up the call.
What's the number again?
You know, I was trying to get away without saying it, but the main office number is 465-4075. And if residents would like to speak with me, I do answer my phone. I'm an extension 4077, and I'm happy to talk to anyone at any time.
Thank you.
Which is why nothing gets done in my office. But that's okay. It is, wasn't it?
All right, thank you, Mr. Blake.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Jackson.
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing on the agenda, but I'd just like to go over my April stats, preliminary stats, service calls. We responded to 2,126 calls. We have 49 case investigations, 13 arrests, nine vehicle impounds, 151 medical aid incidents, 73 auto accidents. And we issued 2,025 parking tickets, 1,097 traffic tickets and six appearance tickets. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Commissioner, how we doing?
Very good, sir.
One of my usual questions. Overall, Seventh Street, you guys, I think, are doing a great job. People are complimenting you guys. I see you guys uptown. The only thing I would say again is somebody a little bit more on foot patrol versus the cars going up and down. I think if we could get, and I'm sure you have that covered, but I just haven't seen it, just somebody, one lad, one lady walking up and down. It makes a big difference, just somebody walking versus driving, just, you know, overall. But you guys are doing a great job and just keep it up. And good old Clinton Road, the usual. If you can just at nighttime, help us out with making sure we do everything we can to get on these trucks and buses and everything else that's going up and down there. Some of them legally, some of them illegally, creating a huge ruckus, especially when we're in this construction phase where the roads are not in bad, they're in bad shape. And, you know, the people that live both on Clinton and like myself, a little bit further off Clinton, it's a ruckus. It is a ruckus in all fairness. So if you can just continue to do the best you can with getting some manpower out there to keep an eye on those, especially the truckers. The truckers are the ones that are creating the majority of this noise. But if we can keep on that as much as you can, the people on Clinton and that east area would really appreciate that. And keep up the great work on Seventh Street.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Commissioner, the, oh, I'm sorry. Obviously, trustee Muldoon does not go down to Seventh Street the same time that I do. Because I actually saw the officers both on what is referred to as a double up, in which you have a driver and a recorder in a car. So the car moves. And as soon as they pass by a vehicle that is unfortunately not paying attention, the recorder goes out, issues the ticket, and then the vehicle keeps on going. So the frequency of being able to address a situation is much higher. Likewise, just for the general public, Commissioner Jackson and I have this email ping pong every morning at about 7:22 to 7:28. When he sends me the report, I read the report and I comment back to him. But what the village residents don't seem to know, or luckily don't know, is how many other things that are outside of what one would consider to be a police matter. The number of times that people seem to be leaving their keys in their car or they're leaving things. How you leave your keys in your car when the car tells you to take them? I haven't figured it out yet. But, you know, it's the same person who probably runs out of gas when the bulb goes on. But there are so many other activities that the police department is tasked with that you never see. If a traffic light goes down, if, you know, whatever you think you need help with, the police department is there. And that's what I see every morning, and it is very enlightening. And thank you very much, and thank you to your officers for all what they do.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner, there were some complaints from residents near Roseville Field about the loud music coming from Lux Cafe, and I believe Mint as well. And I know that's not in our jurisdiction. I guess it's Nassau Police. Have you ever been able to find out anything on that?
Okay, two points. Mint is ours. The complaint wasn't from Mint this time, but we already spoke with them. Fran Lux and the mall itself was generating noise according to the complaints received. We already spoke to the third precinct. We spoke with the commanding officers that asked for assistance in that area. And we also spoke with mall management. So, you know, even though it's not our jurisdiction, we reached out to them. And, you know, they seem cooperative. We'll find out. But if they, we got a good report with the third precinct. You know, the inspector over there is top-notch. And if we have any problems, we'll just keep bothering him. So, but we'll, we'll work on it. And, you know, because even though it's like if something happens, it happens with fireworks or something, it's not our jurisdiction. We don't have the ability to enforce it. But we have, we have good relations with both departments, and we will work with them. The same thing with us. If we have noise coming from our jurisdiction, we will work with them in inquiring the residents or their business down.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Chief Taunton.
Good evening, Mayor. Board of Trustees, Fire Department does not have any agenda items this evening. Would like to provide you with some updated information, though. Fire Department in the month of April responded to 106 fire calls. 103 of those were the lesser alarms, automatic fire alarms, carbon monoxide alarms, two general alarms and one mutual aid to a surrounding department. Some good news, one of our ex captains, Tommy Rivera, was awarded a life-saving citation for his efforts on September 14th. At back-to-school night, a mother went into cardiac arrest. And his combined efforts with a ex-chief from Garden City Park and a local resident who's also a physician had a positive outcome and were able to resuscitate this young lady who is now home in good health. So kudos to ex-captain Tommy Rivera, and well deserved. And then on April 13th, the department hosted a successful volunteer firefighter recruitment day. We engaged with residents and we fostered some community involvement in what we do with the fire department. In lieu of this event, we actually had three new volunteer firefighters put in their application and one junior firefighter to the ranks. This was a great effective outcome, and we're looking forward to these members joining the department. More than happy to answer any questions anyone may have.
It was nice that you recognized ex-captain Rivera at the dinner. You know, it was well deserved for his heroics. Congratulations to you as ST for the department again.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, I'd like to congratulate you. I saw you the night of the function. It was a fantastic function. And it just, I think, for me, and I think everybody there, you can't miss of it. It reinforced to see that many firemen, volunteer firemen and firemen who actually had other careers as well in New York City, perhaps wherever. That many together in uniform was both impressive. And also, it made you feel, certainly made me feel, and I think everybody else up here that was at that function, how grateful we are to you and every other fireman, especially volunteers that sacrificed their time, their family's time, and put their lives at risk. But that one call at any given time, that could, that could happen. So from, from the Muldoon family, I think everybody on the board and everybody in this room, we want to say a big thank you. God bless you guys, and we need you and keep up the great work. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I will pass on your conwords to the department as well. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Chief. Mr. Fishburg.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I have the tax certiori settlements on the calendar, excuse me, which have already been mentioned by Ms. Wu. But if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Village Administrator Swazi can't be here tonight due to a family commitment. But is there any report from Administrator Swazi? No? Okay. All right. So I will, you know, back to what Judy was bringing up before, just to tie in, you know, this idea of why are we starting with a recreation assessment? Like, why are we here? Just a few words to share. As you know, one of the hallmarks of our community is the extensive and successful Parks and Recreation Department. That covers all the parks and athletics programs. As part of the journey to find the right solution for St. Paul's, we have hired consultants to evaluate the current recreation programs in order to develop an informed plan for St. Paul's. The logic is that if we take a hard look at what we have, The logic is that if we take a hard look at what we have, we'll learn what's working, what's missing, and what we could use to make our community thrive even more. The consultants are in the process of developing a recreation master plan and a plan for St. Paul's for the village. But it's so important that they work with residents to hear thoughts and ideas. They need input from the village to get it right and to put us on a path for a project at St. Paul's that will be widely supported. So, um, I'm hopeful that many residents, uh, spread the word, will come on Tuesday night for the kickoff meeting and there'll be additional opportunities, um, to give feedback as well. There'll be a survey, a short survey, an open survey available that night to fill out. It will be available online. There'll also be a mailed survey. And you'll hear, you know, lots of details about the process. If you'd like to come, we'll also be sharing them publicly. And it will be followed shortly thereafter by a St. Paul's survey. So for those who are saying, when are we going to be heard on St. Paul's? It's coming. It's just the process we're going through begins with this broad recreation assessment based on the advice we've gotten and our, um, discussions. That is the best way to start a path to a successful, um, project at St. Paul's. So, and thank you for all the groups who are sharing that and for everyone who's been doing the outreach to spread the word about this exciting time. Any other trustee comments?
Just a quick one in, in that same regard, I did happen to be flipping through Facebook, which I don't do that often. But I did see a very handsome ad put, uh, uh, put on, online by, uh, St. Paul's Alliance encouraging, um, folks in the village, because this is, this is something for all ages. It is, it is absolutely crucial and, and we're going to try to make it fun. And, and we've tried to make it as convenient as, as possible as, as the mayor and, and folks up, uh, on the, on the dais here have mentioned, five thirty to eight thirty. So the more, the merrier. And this is like those famous listening tours that politicians take before they declare for office. This is a listening tour, uh, by us, but primarily by our, our consultants. So thank you. We, we encourage everyone, uh, as, as wholeheartedly as we can to participate, folks of all ages. So thank you.
One of the things that you should know is that we have spent hours as a group sitting down with Brandstetter on these questions, um, that are in the survey. And some of them we've liked and some of them we haven't. But in the bottom line, as Paul said, they are listening to us. One of the things that we trying to stress is it's just not an athletic survey. That, and it's just not like recreational, that there's a cultural side that we want to stress and, you know, talk about, theater, dance, different types of theater, different types of dance, music. The STEM aspect of an interest where a lot of residents have interest in that. So we, it's really important that we get especially the young families out to this event on Tuesday night. Because then from here, what we're really going to try and do is be able to formulate a very accurate questionnaire about what goes into St. Paul's. And that's, you know, we don't want it to be controversial. We want it to be something that's joint, um, that evolves with all the participation. And so it's, it's critical. We have our own little battles in, up here about it. And, um, so we really do need a lot of help. So any encouragement that you can give to like people at the bus stops in the morning and things like that would be great.
And actually to that point, and I think Michelle makes a good point about what is recreation? And I'm hoping, and maybe Paul can just share a few. Anyone who follows the Garden City Recreation Programs knows it's so much more than sports, right? So perhaps, and I think recreation, that has an amazing mailing list, I'm hoping tomorrow, if it didn't go out already, when you send out that flyer encouraging all the followers of recreation to come to this important meeting, maybe you want to highlight a little bit, um, some of the programs in that, although most of your followers know it. But just to show that it's seniors, special needs, adults, children, it's so many. And if you want to share a little bit, just a moment about how broad the recreation department is and that the survey isn't just for kids' sports, folks, everybody should come out and be heard. So.
Absolutely. We do have, we do have a wonderful, uh, database with Constant Contact, which is our email program. We have over four thousand names in the database, email addresses, and we have a phenomenal open rate. An open rate on emails of fifteen to twenty percent is considered to be good. We have a sixty-five percent open rate. Wow is right. People are engaged with our department. We have programs ranging from STEM, as trustee Harrington mentioned. We do STEM programs with an outfit called Mad Science. We do a filmmaking camp, we do chess camps, we do a dance ensemble and a dance class that is second to none. Uh, we have in the past done theater. During my first tenure here, we had a very successful youth theater group that worked out at Cluett Hall. We do amazing programs for seniors, which is only going to expand as we move forward. And Felicia really gets her, her toes into that. We do trips, we do lectures, we do, uh, sessions where physicians and lawyers can come in and give advice and give speeches. It is a well-rounded department. It grew out of athletics. If you know the history of the department, it was started in nineteen fifty-six by a volunteer group called the Citizens Committee on Recreation, which evolved into the Recreation Commission. The first superintendent was a gentleman named Al Sikurski. He had been the superintendent at Valley Stream. And when he first came over here, he was brought in because they were already having difficulty getting athletic fields properly scheduled. So that was his main goal. Sounds familiar, doesn't it? But he was, for the first year or two, he was actually employed by the school district. He worked in the recreation office downstairs, but he worked for the school district. He then brought in a gentleman, Tom Greco. And Tom was here for, until nineteen seventy-six, when he tragically passed away at the age of forty-five. Tom really expanded the department. He was one of the, uh, icons on Long Island in early Parks and Recreation. And then things really popped in the eighties when Mike Connor and Bar Ferris were running the department and we got into the culture in a big way. We did judge the art shows at Cluett Hall. We did antique book fairs, we do a record show every year. It is so much more than athletics and we want to offer something for everyone. And that's our goal. My staff will tell you, I drive them crazy because I don't think we can ever do enough programming. And when people come in with program ideas, I encourage them. And sometimes they work, sometimes they don't. But you'll never know unless you try them. So we have a, a good program. We think we're, we think we do a good job, but this is going to be the proof in the pudding. And if the residents have something special that they'd like us to consider, we'll certainly take a look at it. That's what we do. Most recently, you could take a look at pickleball. We had resident, you know, come in, want pickleball. We got courts inside at, at the fieldhouse. We have courts on all the tennis courts in the village now. We're planning on doing some lessons this summer and some learned play programs. So we try to be responsive and we're really looking forward to hearing what everybody has to say. So again, please come out and cast your opinion. It's going to be a fun night and, uh, everybody should have a great time.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
I got a couple of things. Uh, I'm looking forward to Tuesday night as well, see what Brandstetter is going to do at this event. We did meet with them once personally, uh, already. And, uh, it was about a month ago and they seem like they're pretty, pretty good organization. Uh, we went over a lot of stuff on the, uh, on the survey points. I will say, I'm disappointed so far, uh, from what I've seen on what they came back with on the, uh, surveys lately. They need a lot of work. Doesn't seem like they're putting in a lot of hard work and effort from the, uh, opinions we give for changes. And I know a lot of the, uh, group up here on the dais met with them again last night and, uh, made that very clear that we need to get more specific, we need to keep it simple. So when these surveys go out, they're clear, they're precise, and they're easy to understand. And I want to clarify, and I want Mayor, you to clarify this this evening for, for the residents. As, as much as we understand right now, we're going to have two surveys. First survey is going to be for recreational sports and parks needs for long-term, say, five to ten years for the entire village, which I support. And I think it's a fantastic idea. Long-term planning is always great. And listen to the young people, listen to the old people, listen to everybody and see what we're missing, what we're doing well, what we're not doing well, and be our own biggest critiques when it comes to what we have going on in the village. I think that's a great idea. Number two is, as far as I understand it, St. Paul's, the interior uses for a community center and a culture center, everything that suits a two-year-old, all the way up to a ninety-two and please God, a hundred and two-year-old. That's where the focus on these surveys and the questions should lie. And there should be zero discussion, especially with St. Paul's, when it comes to these surveys for construction, demolition, or personal financial questions, which I have seen on previous surveys. Cause for me personally, and I think the majority of the board, that's going to be a non-starter. We're not going back to rehash the vote of October two thousand twenty-three, tw- two thousand twenty-three on this survey. These surveys are to obtain quality information from our residents for specific purposes as to how we can use St. Paul's, the interior of St. Paul's for a community center and a culture center, which I think would be amazing for our generation and generations to come if we can pull this off and we can persuade the residents of this town that it's a great investment in our future, our grandkids' future and everything else. The, how we, how we deal with the building itself is a whole other conversation that will come after this in regards to how we're going to do that. But for these surveys, two surveys coming up, these, in my view, and in the majority of the board, they should be specifically tasked to those issues. And in no way, shape or form should they be tasked going back to the vote on St. Paul's in October of two thousand twenty-three. So I just want to make that clear and I want the mayor to clarify that to the residents, please, if she can.
So the one, um, detail that, uh, as we all know, we have not just a rec assessment, we have a rec assessment and we have a building that we have struggled for years to try to find a solution for. And we're getting on a path to that. So it's more complex than most rec assessments. And the approach we are taking is beginning with the recreation survey. Now initially, that first survey was going to address recreation needs and St. Paul's. And there was a pretty much overwhelming feedback when they, and they did what we asked them to do. So we wanted, that was our thought to start off. But when it came back and you had a survey that was mixing those two issues, the sentiment was that it was confusing. And people, it, it was too much really to put into one. Like, why are they asking me about, you know, the parks? And then they're asking me about the building and what is this? You know, we decided as a group that it was to, um, it wasn't the best approach, the clearest approach to a complicated, difficult issue with a lot of emotion behind it. So we decided to separate the two and we took out, so you probably saw those, that first survey that had like the St. Paul's questions at the end. And then people said, well, why weren't they at the beginning? Well, they're not going to be mixed now. It will be a pure recreation survey. So it actually got a little longer because in order to combine the two, they had cut out some of their standard information that they did want for a recreation survey. So we now have, um, and what we discussed last night was our input on this recreation survey. And the other thing, you know, not to talk too long on this, but, um, was there was a lot of discussion about who gets it. And when these companies work and do a recreation assessment, they generally do not send it to every household. They find a statistically valid sampling, they send it out and they, they know the numbers of what response they need to get accurate results on community feedback. We all decided as a group that the St. Paul's issue is such an emotional issue in the village and so many people have such strongly held feelings on it that the survey really should go to every household. So we made a decision as we were going through this process that it was, um, we would have it go to every household. In order to be statistically valid, there needs to be a sampling within that. And that's probably a little too complicated for this. Come Tuesday night, the experts will talk to you more about it. But what you will see is a, um, we now have them doing the recreation survey as they usually do them. It doesn't get mailed to every single household. It gets mailed to the appropriate number of households to get, um, valid results. They wait for the appropriate return for those results to be valid. And there's also then an open survey, which is most of the most pertinent questions from that, but shortened. That will be available on Tuesday night and that will be online as well. So everyone can participate, but we made a decision that we didn't think every household needed to have a, you know, mailed copy of the recreation assessment. The St. Paul's, on the other hand, which will follow, we agreed that that's the, um, that is the survey that we will be making sure it goes to every household and everyone has an opportunity to see the whole survey and respond to it. So hopefully that, and as far as the details, I think we're pretty much with some minor tweaks. We've, um, hammered out the details on the recreation survey. And I have compiled comments on the St. Paul's survey, which will be sent and then respond. It's going to be a back and forth on that to get the data. The thing is to get the data we need to move forward to get, and this is where we're going to be relying on the professionals who have an incredible success rate on getting bonds passed on their projects because of the way they use the data and the survey. They can read the community to the point that they don't really go put something out to a bond resolution, it's not going to pass. So that was, um, something we thought was important and that's their, where their expertise comes in.
Like Leah, last night, we made it pretty clear, or when I was talking to Pat, that I felt the survey, a lot of questions were canned. And I felt like I was being rude when I said that because I did say, you know, I felt that the survey was canned. Yeah, or a lot of questions were, when they're talking about bicycles and things like that. But during the period of time, we did basically rip it apart. And I think what we'll get or what comes back, we should approve. I do think it's important when the survey, the new survey comes back, everyone on the board sees it and that we feel comfortable with it. I do think that one of the things that we also want to make very clear going forward is the fact that what Vinnie did, trustee Muldoon talked about is the survey for St. Paul's is going to have to be worded very properly and that it isn't a rehash of October. And that it is, how do we use the building as it is? No facadeism, no demolition, you know? How do we fit a slop sink into some of the rooms that are there already? And how do we put a dance theater, a dance floor into a bunch of the rooms? And that's kind of what the next phase of it will be when we break down the answers, um, from the survey. And we plan on working on it and taking those, those drawings that were done by Willa Leece or whomever to sit down and get, look at the answers that we get from the residents and saying, here's where this could fit, here's where it couldn't fit. And then hopefully create better quality questions for the residents with regards to St. Paul's. So that, you know, so that like it's not, it won't be a waste of time and that we get really accurate, important feedback.
I, I just want to say one thing, because this is an extremely professional company with a terrific, I, I think we, in fairness, the canned nature of it, these are surveys and if anyone in the room has gotten a survey, they're not, you know, they do have standard questions. I think they've been very responsive. I think they are, you know, their results speak for themselves. They are professional and they're, they're doing a very good job and they have been responding. Some of the things I think that we, um, that came up is they'll put things in. We have to remember that they've worked in a lot of other communities and they may think of things. A lot of us, we've been in Garden City and we know our rec and we love our rec and we, we have to be careful that we don't put blinders on because they may have something that they've seen in New Jersey or Kentucky or Ohio or wherever they did it. You know, trends that they're aware of that we may not know. So I don't think, um, we want to be too limiting. But I think we had a great meeting last night and I think we're on a very good track. To your other point, I don't know that this is the, um, the, the success, I think, is, is based on this whole process being driven by the community. And that's another thing that, you know, we've discussed and that's where everyone in this room comes in and everyone around town who hopefully will be tuned in and coming to these sessions and giving their input. Because I think we have to listen to what comes in if we want to have a chance of having a project at the end that has community support and it's going to need a lot of community support. It's going to be a, a big project. And if you don't have widespread community support, it will never be executed. So I think we have to be cautious that we're not, you know, narrowing things in any particular direction and that we listen, we are here to listen. We're not here to, to sell you anything and to, uh, push a plan on the community. And that's what Brandstetter will be helping us with.
I would hope we wouldn't limit it. And certainly the poll that we took, and it was a poll and certainly not, uh, the end all be all. But adapted reuse, partial reuse seemed to get the majority. So, um, I would think, when you, Michelle, you mentioned no facadeism. I mean, that could very well be part of partial reuse going forward. So I think we should leave our options open in terms of having a survey that, uh, the bulk of the community takes, takes a look at.
I, I think it's critical that this is a listening, as Ed mentioned, is a listening tour and that this is driven by the community and not any particular group or, um, thoughts. And as far as the prior poll, the poll got us to here and the poll is, that's history. We found out we had support to bring these consult- We found out we had support to bring these consultants in, to spend the money, to, to try to get a project designed that will have community support, something we haven't been able to do in the last three decades. So I don't think the poll, I, I know what the poll told us. The poll told, told us the people who went, thirty-nine percent wanted it demolished and didn't want any more exploring of it. And sixty-one percent wanted us to continue efforts to find a project that would preserve part or all of the building and have widespread community support. So I think we all know, just figuring the math and part of why the listening aspect is so important and everybody being engaged is so important is we've got to, this project's going to have to win a lot of people. We're going to have to build consensus in a huge way, including the thirty-nine percent. If we still have at the end thirty-nine percent who want no part of it, it's probably never going to happen.
Mayor, I don't share your supposition that because they're a big company, they're good. Ford built an Edsel. I can go through other examples in which the ability of the company to project what they're going to do is not reality. Here, you just said, they did what you asked them to do. However, they gave us a survey that had a boat launch for Garden City. So I believe that critical analysis of what is the product they intend to give us, how they intend to conduct the survey, is one of those tasks that we as a board must take to heart and not rely on what the appearances are. I support trustee Muldoon in which the next step is to determine what will go inside the building. It's not a question of building a new building. It's not a question of chopping it up or anything else. I would support the fact that the poll survey, however you want to call it, has to concentrate on those activities that the recreation department believes are drivers in the community that should be in that building for the use of the residents.
I want, I want to follow up just one quick thing, then we can move on from there, whoever else has comments. Brandstetter, to me, seems like a very good organization. And when I met them, they said all the right things. They seem like really nice guys. But like trustee Torino said, we're paying them, I believe, somewhere in the range of $160,000 of hard earned tax money. And if they earn it, I'm all about supporting them a hundred percent. And I'll continue to support them as long as they listen to this entire board and the committee and listen to what we ask them to do and guide them to do. And one of the, one of the things that just put a big red light for me with them was when we talked about them the last time, there were several things on the, on the surveys that were obviously not catered or not set up for Garden City. They were for Utah, they were for out west. And the perfect example was mountain biking. I'm like, guys, I think you know, we're living a flat piece of land in Long Island. There's no mind, mountain biking going on here. There's no hiking going on here. So can we just get rid of all the, the standard stuff you have in these surveys? And understand when you leave here tonight, the Garden City is this unique historical community. Yeah, we have St. Paul's we're, we're dealing with beyond the needs of the village. But you have to understand when you leave here tonight, these are the things you need to work on and adjust this survey. And when I saw the survey this week, it looks like they didn't really make any adjustment. So I'm hoping that they're going to listen after last night and your meeting last night, which I was not a part of, and some of the other trustees were not as well, and understand we're trying to get great information from our residents. And the first thing, and the last thing I'll say is, we do need everybody to come out on Tuesday night and let them know whatever you want for this village, that you feel I can make it better from a recreational perspective, sports perspective, theater, you name it, from two-year-old, five-year-old, fifty-year-old, ninety-five-year-old. You know what? It is important that we go out and talk to them, give them all this information. And then it's up to the board to make sure that these questionnaires and the surveys that go out are approved by the board as a whole and not by two people or four people or three people or seven people. There's eight people on this board. My thing tonight is to make sure that we are all going to have a chance to look at these questions and this survey and make sure before it goes out the door to the residents that we approve it and we like what it's all about. So we're getting good, accurate information that's open, transparent, and gets what we need to move all the balls forward. So thank you.
If I can just try to put a bow on this, and I'll do it very quickly. And I, I do see a half a dozen of you falling asleep back there, and I don't, I don't blame you, but hang in with us. We are driven, we are clearly driven, and we are here today because of the vote in October. And that vote was to save the building. This board is not going to relitigate that question. And that's a term I used months ago. When you spoke, and I know it was just an opinion poll, we listened. And now we're moving forward. If, if we screw up, pardon the expression, this survey, it's going to be very embarrassing. Now, the way that we all have to work is all eight of us can't be together unless we're with you, unless we declare that there's going to be a meeting. So there's four of us on the, on the committee. And it's, it's Ms. Harrington, it's Judy, myself, and whom I forget.
Me.
And the mayor. So we are not going to put anything out that this board does not agree with. It's not a perfect process in getting to a, a final survey because we do have to educate these people on who we are. And that's the reason that we need all of you to come out on Tuesday. It's, it's really key. So we're going to move forward and we're going to, we're going to do it deliberatively and we're going to do it collectively. No one is going to be left out, but we need to hear from you to, to, to make St. Paul's what we all want it to be. Thank you.
Just have to, I know you wanted to tie it up, but the we, because I just want to make sure the we is clear. And I don't want anyone to be misled as to what the poll told us because the poll, as much as we, you know, struggled over those wording, the wording of that, we all know that the poll put demo against both partial and full preservation. And we also had very uncertain numbers at that time, which we tried to make very clear in the poll and the information that went out to residents. And the vote was to further explore efforts to preserve part or all of the building. So we're not, we can't misinterpret that as a, a vote for a precise outcome on, on the St. Paul's building. It just wasn't there. And if we are to think that, we're certain to fail. So I have to slightly disagree and say this is, I will do everything in my power to make sure we are listening, not just to the eight trustees up here, but we're listening to every resident in the village. Every voice is heard and that we get that data from residents because that is our only chance of finding a project. And I know many people think we can't do it. And if we, if we start making a whole lot of assumptions, we won't be able to. If we start presupposing things, I think that is a fatal flaw. I think it is very important that we approach this with open minds, listening to the community and that we are, you know, I just want to, Dory, you understand that's where.
We were hamstrung by the fact that there were three choices. And in a poll, when you have three choices, there's a significant chance that you're not going to get a majority. So we had to lump the partial with the full. Now, what we'll do is we'll ask you in our poll what you'd like to do. Period, end of story.
I, I, I'm not sure if I'm more confused or it's clearer to me. So I, I don't think trustee Muldoon's question has been answered by Mayor Flanagan. So are we moving forward from the last poll result? Are we, or are we circling back to include demolition in this?
As far as the last poll result, that's not really, it, it says what it says, but it's not data that will be used for this project. They, we will be gathering data. It will be statistically valid data, which is important that we can rely on. So I don't know if that answers your question. As far as the St. Paul's and the way we're getting feedback, we have the steering committee. We have four trustees on the steering committee. We have the five people from the St. Paul's committee. We have Paul Blake and we have Ralph Swazi. And I have asked of the four of us who are on it, we're all kind of buddying and keeping another trustee in the loop. So you're going to see everything, you're going to have your opportunity to give feedback. I'm getting from Bruce, I know Jessica, you're, you're all giving your feedback so that we can compile it and give it collectively to the consultants.
So can I, oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, there was just one quick point. We, we undertook a poll and used that vehicle because we have to decide, it is our job to decide what we do with St. Paul's. The, because it, it involves an extraordinary expenditure, that's just the way that, that the law works. But we need your view and you couldn't, and correct me if I'm wrong, Gary, but we couldn't have a, what is it, a contest, a, a vote, a definitive vote.
Requiem could be held because a trustee cannot delegate their authority.
All right, thank you. Okay, so that's why we did what we did.
And I think not to torture this, but I think we have to remember that it's not really, while we will cast a vote at some point, if it's not supported by the residents, it means little. It will not be, there will be a bond resolution that will not pass. Or even if it passes, if we don't have enough support, it wouldn't be the first time in the world that a project was started and stopped, right? Then they all get voted out of office because it was too much money. So we have to be smart about this. This is a huge endeavor. It's a big challenge and I'm excited that I think we're, we're on a good path here and we just have to make sure we.
But I think we have to build support for the out, from the outcome of, of that poll. That's what we're doing. We're going to build support for.
I do want to say, so I've been to two meetings, so I will say this is a very limited experience with the, with the committee. So far, I have not seen anything that will go to the public that this committee is putting together that talks about demolition. I think that's really the root of your question, right? I have not seen, there was a lot of back and forth about wording and stuff, but where we are now, there is nothing that alludes to it or hides it under a different word. We took some things out last night of the posters that might have been confusing to people. Why was it there, et cetera? So, so far, and again, two meetings worth, but I have not seen anything that says we're revisiting the question of demolition.
Thanks, Judy. Mayor, I have one quick one for you. Can you let the residents know the groups, the individual groups that Brandstetter is meeting with on Tuesday before the open meeting? I know they're meeting with a bunch of different groups. Can you tell us all those groups and why they're meeting them?
All right, so part of the process, as they're getting to know Garden City, they have the open house, the kickoff meeting, which everyone's invited to. And they also have stakeholder groups. Is that what, I'm not sure if they use that term or another term, but they would like to come and have some small group meetings. And the purpose of that is to better understand, hear from people, understand what they want, how they feel, what their, we need to build a consensus.
That's, that's what we're doing. We're, we're tapping into the, some of the leadership across the village in, in various affinity groups.
So we've had, and the St. Paul's committee has done incredible work. And Bill Cavann is not here tonight, and I don't have his list, but he'll tell you everyone who's scheduled so far. But he has done outreach and we advertised, if your group hasn't heard from us, let us know. There has been very much an open invitation for every organization or any kind of a group in town to get involved in this process. He got a lot of information. He's had meetings with many groups, all the groups he's made contact with. He is reaching out to see if they want to have a sit-down meeting. And we also, part of the, the purpose also is to hear from the voices of the village, the strong voices of the village. If anyone's like written a letter, you know, my radar, if you've written a letter to the Garden City News with strongly held convictions on St. Paul's, would like you to come in, right? Everyone who has strong feelings and has been at this should come into the table. Just let them get to know you. It's going to make them more informed as we move towards, because we need, as I tried to explain before with those numbers, we need to draw a lot of people in. And, and the support has to really come from the community for this project. So we would like to have, you know, as many groups, people who have strong feelings, who are, you know, influencers or are parts of organizations that want to talk about their needs, any, all groups like that.
Mayor, when I saw that list, I, I saw it briefly. I did not see anything on there. And again, there was groups that I certainly disagreed that they should have specific personal meetings with Brandstetter. That again, we're paying a lot of money for trying to pick and choose which groups meet Brandstetter personally on a one-on-one. Personally, I get the idea of it, but you, you're going to have the situation that I'm going to say now where I did not see anything, any meeting specifically with the seniors at the senior center. Why in the name of God would you not come into this town and not have a meeting with the seniors? The people, again, one more time, I keep saying it, who deserve the most respect, who've done the most for this town. And meanwhile, there's people who no disrespect, you know, whether they have an agenda on this side or that side or the other side. What's special about three or four people that are getting to meet Brandstetter that I saw on that list that I didn't agree with? And seniors at the senior center that at least deserve the respect that the sports people do and the theater people do and everybody else does that weren't on that list? And to me, that's completely unfair. And I just, I was, I was kind of shocked to not see the seniors on that list. And I thought that, that's, that's poor, poor form, in my opinion.
Just to be a little confused as far as the list. And as far as the seniors, I did send an email and the idea of having Felicia try and get a group organized when they're here so that they could go by the, I don't know if that's happened yet, Paul, but I did. That was one way I was thinking, I know we have an active group at the senior center, so maybe they could go there and meet with them. That is something I asked Paul to work on. I actually have reached out to four senior men who are all going to be, so I, there's no, we're not overlooking the seniors. We're not overlooking any group. And as far as the list you saw, that did include, have you seen Bill Cavann's list? Because he is doing the outreach and the scheduling, so he has all of.
Saw the one list and I was not happy at all with that list because I thought there's certain people on there that was getting special treatment, to be honest with you, that shouldn't be, it doesn't matter who they are. And you leave out, there was no theatrical groups on there, there was no drama groups on there, there was no senior centers. So that's the problem when you start picking and choosing as to who should meet with Brandstetter. Everybody is a taxpayer in this town and you either have an open meeting where everybody just goes and talks to them openly or there's no individual meetings because you're going to leave people out. And to me, the number one group that should have been on that, if we were being fair and considerate, is the seniors. And again, no disrespect, they weren't on that list and they should have been on that.
I'm sorry, first of all, it is disrespectful, okay? The language you're using is highly critical. And I have a phone, I have been trying to, I'm happy to speak with you about this. And I think that is the more appropriate place to have, have this conversation. The committee is aware of the efforts, Bill Cavann is aware of the efforts that have been absolutely widespread in reaching out to people. To suggest that anyone's being left out or giving favoritism, tell me one person.
They were left out because they weren't on that list that I saw a week ago.
Well, maybe you should have called me when you saw the list because I believe the list you're referring to was a short list of people who I came to mind as strong opinions on St. Paul's, have been writing letters, the St. Paul's Alliance, the Historical Society. I think we want to make sure, and Bill Cavann has done a lot of outreach. John Portis, I would hope would come in. I know Meg Norris is going to be coming in. The, you know, FDM is not an organization, but some of the, the individuals who have written letters should be heard. It will make our consultants, it'll, it'll put them in a much better position to navigate this path forward if they have met with and had a one-on-one and understand better the people who are most likely to be expressing their opinions, whatever those opinions may be.
We'll certainly have seniors involved in this process, trustee Muldoon. Candidly, I disagree with, I don't even know who FDM is anymore. But the whole idea, excuse me, the whole idea. But the whole, excuse me, the whole idea here is, in my view, as an individual who has not been invited to the ball and only gets to find out later on, sometimes the day of it.
As did I.
So you and I are Cinderella for today. But the fact of the matter is, if we wind up getting poster boards in the morning that already had on page eight about chopping up St. Paul's and taking part of it down, how did they, BCI, get the information to put on a poster board? What was the source of that information? And that thankfully is being taken out. But the difficulty with understanding a survey is the bias that goes in. And the person or persons that give the survey company the information. I have yet to see what information was provided to them. Okay, we're past that. But for there to be a large section on three surveys about demolition, about pessimism, I don't know why or where that came from, but I'm glad that it is now out.
All right, I think we can move on. Move on. I will say, I have every expectation that the survey will address partial preservation and alternatives and be gauging people's attachment to different parts of the building. And I don't see how we, yes, yeah, I don't, that's not recreation, but I don't see how you could possibly think you're surveying people on St. Paul's without asking some of those questions, but we'll get to that. We have all the input and there will be a back and forth. And as far as, you should have everything, we're getting everything at one time and everything is being shared, no secrets. I don't know where they got that link. Ed, you walked in with that and I didn't have that, that printout on their, of their boards.
Yeah, that, that was sent yesterday afternoon, I think. But, but Trustee Muldoon, we'll, we'll be sure, the committee will be sure to speak to any and every group, as, as the mayor has said, and we'll bring the folks from Branstadter back if, if we feel and if the residents believe that there are other groups that should speak to them. But it's just, it's an opportunity for them to get to know everything and everyone in the village. It's their request. And, and that's what, that's what the coordinator said last night.
And Trustee Fineran?
Yes.
I have no problem with that at all. That's not what I said. What I said was, I was not happy in any way, shape or form, and I'm still not mayor, and it's not personal, that the seniors were not on that list. I don't think that's a crazy thing to say in public or anything else. Alls I'm trying to say is, the seniors should be first and foremost on everything we do in this village. And certainly, if we have a company that's representing the entire village, they should get a chance to meet at the senior center or wherever it is and talk to seniors. That's all I said. I stand by it a thousand percent. And I would hope that the new list of whoever Branstadter is going to meet on Tuesday privately includes the seniors. I don't think that's insulting or radical to anybody that is just, isn't in this conversation. I just.
All right, so it just.
Trustee Muldoon, we had a pretty heated discussion last night. And, that's polite. It was about the list of people that are Branstadter's meeting. And I raised a little bit of a heated discussion about it. And as a result, we put together a lot more names that will be added to the list and a lot of those people are here tonight.
Terrific.
Let me just clarify though, they were all on Bill's list. There was no, there was a heated, I think there was some misunderstanding because people saw lists and rather than calling me, which is what I would ask you to do in the future, they made assumptions that those were the only people invited when Bill has been doing extensive and widespread outreach. And I'll have to mention that I could look back, but I suspect that most of the people, not only on the list, certainly on the list, are seniors. So I don't know why you keep talking about leaving the seniors out, because I think most of them are actually seniors. So let's move on.
Sounds good.
All right, so citizen comments on agenda items.
No, excuse me, I got, I got one more thing, right? We're still on, on mayor and trustees' questions, right, and comments?
We were, yes.
Okay, I've got one thing to finish off with here. I make a motion to suspend the board rules to replace two matters on the agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can you say what the matters are?
Well, we have to suspend it first, then we make.
So make a motion to suspend the rules.
All in favor, yes.
Now you make your motion.
First motion, I make a motion to restore the former item on the consent calendar that the mayor removed today as Agenda 14. Number 14 is power washing at Franklin Avenue, transfer of funds, engagement of professional services, Metro Express Services. Board authorization is requested to transfer $23,500 to street maintenance contractual services from contingent. Board authorization is requested to approve the proposal submitted by Metro Express Services, 1301 Metropolitan Avenue, Brooklyn, New York, to power wash the sidewalk and paver areas on Franklin Avenue between Seventh Street and 12th Street at an estimated cover of $23,500.
All right, I just would like to explain this item I saw on the agenda. It had not been discussed with me. No, before he makes the motion, I'm going to make a comment. I know, but I'd like to make a comment before. Okay, all right, so you move it on.
Don't move. One second. One second.
All right, Ed, John.
So I just have to add to this item that recently before the board meeting, the vendor did send an updated quote due to various reasons of existing conditions that he ran into on Seventh Street. The quote has been increased from the amount that you just said to $34,900.
I think that makes this a non-issue because that's going to hit the, it's got to go out for RFP now.
No, this was a personal services or an RFP?
It's going to hit 35.
Yeah, this is not a professional service. We were under the procurement amount, which allows us to get three prices. We could, as an option, reduce the amount of area that we do to stay under procurement. That is a decision that the board would have to make.
John, we can, we can look at the scope of the work and reduce the square footage and I have no problem whatsoever, and I think it's a better job actually, to send it out to bid and get three bids to make sure we're getting the best pricing. But one of the reasons I got elected myself personally, and I think the majority of the board, is our commitment to the village, that we would, for the first time in a long time, give this village a good cleaning, painting and doing all the small things well that we promised we would do with the people in this village. Alls I'm trying to do with.
And whether it makes sense and how much it would cost to do all the areas and which areas should be done. I haven't personally heard any complaints on Franklin, but maybe others have. I heard a lot, we all heard about Seventh Street. We saw the pictures, people were really unhappy. And I love your enthusiasm and I agree with the, the efforts and I appreciate that, but let's just talk about this, not at a board meeting.
We are hearing different things because I heard a lot of people are being very happy about Seventh Street being power washed.
I didn't say that. I said, I haven't heard complaints about Franklin Avenue.
Mayor, there is a protocol. And you have established a protocol of putting things on the agenda. If any board member, it has to be on a Thursday. This item, number 14, was on the agenda since Thursday of last week. So what happens is it sits out there until this morning and the only iteration that any of the trustees know about any concerns about this is when we get a revised agenda. There is no other information. The other protocol for handling an item on the agenda is to leave it on the agenda. Then any trustee, including the mayor, can take it off the consent calendar. We can then have the discussion and vote on it. But the problem is communication goes two ways. If you want to take something off the agenda, real simple. Billy Clark says, okay, it's off the agenda, the mayor asked for it to be removed so that we can have discussion. All I know is I got an email saying it's off the agenda without any reason, any discussion, any iteration.
Okay, so it wasn't your item. I did speak with Superintendent DPW about it. I also spoke with Trustee Fineran about it, who had also heard not any of the details on it either as of yesterday. So I think we can move forward and it is my responsibility, the agenda, I take it seriously and I removed it.
I think certainly, Trustee Muldoon, you have to be commended for your efforts on Seventh Street.
Thank you.
Again, on Franklin Avenue, I hadn't heard that there were too much issues there. Seventh Street is like the crown jewel of our village. So we certainly want to do the best we can to make it look like that. I know my personal experience and I defer to your construction and contracting expertise with power washing, you know, it looks great and then all of a sudden you got to do it again.
Call maintenance.
Yeah, it's, it's constant maintenance. So, you know, Trustee Chester doesn't maybe, you know, didn't maybe use the right company or whatever the case may be, as where Trustee Muldoon would have. But again, I think for Seventh Street, it was very important as far as Franklin Avenue, I didn't quite see that, but again, we'll look at it. I will make a point to look at it and I'm glad it's going out to bid. And in terms of putting things on the agenda, it was always my understanding, even when we had, when Mayor Vincent Alley was, was in, that we had to get them on Thursday before a meeting. That's what I've tried to do. But anyway, let's move on and we'll, we'll get this.
No, thanks, Jer.
This wasn't a trustee item. This is, and department items are polled for different reasons. So this was not either Trustee Muldoon or Torino's item.
Can I just, a comment from a, from my perspective is that, I know, this discussion is not really about whether we power wash Franklin or whether we power wash Seventh or whatever. The discussion is about how we communicate with each other and operate together. And one thing I hope, I'll speak for myself, from a common sense perspective, there are rules and protocols and, and I think those have to be followed, but I also think we don't want to hide behind them. And, and so if, if something is important to one of us, whether it's put on by a department head or by me or by Mary, by you or whoever, and there's a change in that, I think common sense would tell me to call that person and say, look, here's what I'm doing, I just want to let you know, make sure you're okay. Even if they don't agree, they should know. And, and that, to me, is the essence of this conversation, is how we're going to operate together as a board and communicate and, and really understand each other. It is not about power washing. So my hope is going forward, we have those conversations, we don't say the rules are this, we don't say the rules are that, and then I don't have to worry about it. But we actually respect each other and treat each other with some understanding of what's important to each other and, and really listen to that and act on that as opposed to what the rules are. I think that's the most important thing if we're going to get things done together.
And not to just get a call or call someone, but actually understand where they come from, their perspective and respect that. Because we can call someone and just ignore what they think. So I think it's very important to not just call, but also listen and respect.
I would agree, Judy, and just, and that is exactly why I tried to speak with you, Vinnie, because I know it's important to you and I'd like to have the conversation. And I think we can have it in the next few days, so let's move forward.
We'll do that. Let me just finish on.
Reachable all.
Yep.
There's a motion pending.
I want.
You can make the motion and then table the motion and adjourn it until we get further deck.
All right, so we should do that. Instead of you just articulating it well.
So if the motion is now modified, that it is being made, and, and once we vote in favor of the motion, it is to be adjourned until we get further documentation from Superintendent Baroni.
I don't know why we are continuing adjourning this motion since.
No, that would be the appropriate.
No, I think it can be withdrawn. I think that's the appropriate way, rather than having a lingering motion on an item that's no longer accurate because those pricing, prices are no longer being offered. So I think it can be, I don't know why would be adjourning something with incorrect information.
To the 23rd.
Right, but we, it can be withdrawn considering what we just heard here. I don't know why we're adjourning this. You can always make another motion. It's not a big deal to withdraw that.
Do you guys, whatever you guys want to do. So we can get to the next thing. I'll withdraw the motion. I got one more motion. I make a motion that Bruce Torino, trustee Bruce Torino, is added to the legal committee without limitation.
Is this all been to discussion at this point?
Yes.
Okay. Trustee Torino, you've served on the board, correct me if I'm not, 1997 to 2001, was that your time period?
Affirmative.
Under Frank Taches and then Harold Heckin?
Those were the mayors, yes.
Okay. And then, of course, the, the second year of Mayor Vincent Alley's term.
Which is when I was on the legal committee.
Right. The concerns I have, and this is a history going forward, for some reason with Mayor Flanagan, who's the first female mayor that you're dealing with, there seems to be some animosity there. And, and let me give you some examples.
I don't believe that is part of a motion.
I'm, well, we're having discussion.
Does it have anything to do with my.
Yes, it does. Yes, it does. It absolutely does, okay? You had, or Mayor Vincent Alley sent a unauthorized letter to, at the time, trustee Flanagan's employer, questioning whether she should be allowed to run. Of course, that was on expired village stationery with the trustees who were not on the board at the time, not aware of it, as well as the current trustees at that time, not being aware of it. You have never denied getting involved with that letter. I mean, it has been discussed. It has been discussed.
How did that has to do with?
It has to do with you getting on the legal committee, sir.
Okay, now I'm already on the legal committee.
I understand that and, and I'm comfortable with that.
Good.
That I'm comfortable with. But not necessarily on the full legal committee. It's unusual for such an assistant sitting trustee relative to really wind up suing the village. To me, there would have been a clear conflict of interest. And I'm sure the person we're talking about was certainly, could be qualified for other things in his life, but certainly not here. But yet, there was a suit against the village, against the mayor. And I find that very disturbing, that that happened. And from a personal standpoint, myself, I have spent hundreds of hours in terms of dealing with the railroad, on the landscaping on the railroad, okay? There was a meeting. Your ad basically said that you and Major Mayor Vincent Alley, this was your last political ad before the campaign, negotiated and secured the enhanced landscaping agreement in Merlin Avenue with the LIR. Now, number one, at the time that was negotiated, you weren't on the board. Number two, I have a email here from the attorney that handled our negotiations with the railroad, Joseph Macy. I'd be happy to pass this around. I don't know the copy here somewhere. On that, he thanks Mayor Vincent Alley. On that, he thanks Mayor Vincent Alley, Deputy Mayor at the time, Tom O'Brien, and myself for the meeting that we had that successfully negotiated the enhanced landscaping. Everyone can take a look at that. So having spent so much time there, I was offended that you would actually put that in there. So yes, those are my reasons and you have the board, so you'll get on it. But that will be my reasons to oppose you to be on the legal committee.
Okay, may I speak, please? Reason why we want Bruce Torino, trustee Torino, the majority of the board, on the legal committee, has nothing got to do with anybody's personal past history. It's for one reason and one reason only, to have the most qualified person, period, on any committee that we're trying to assign people. We have the most experienced, 46 years of experience, Bruce Torino, trustee Torino. This is not about liking somebody, disliking somebody, what happened in the past, what didn't happen in the past. We're talking about the present board and what's in the best interests of the residents of this town and the use of their tax dollars. Trustee Torino is the most qualified by a long shot on this board to serve on the legal committee, to give us advice, to look out for our best interests from a legal perspective, to save us money where he knows he can or cannot. Again, this is not about personalities. This is about putting the most qualified people, who don't cost us anything for a change, on the board to look out for our best interests. And I'll finish and keep it simple on this one.
Okay, can I?
No, excuse me, I'm not finished yet. I'm almost done. I'm almost done. Thanks, Bruce, I'm almost done. Trustee Finneran.
Sir.
Would you agree or disagree that if you were to select the most qualified attorney sitting up on this stage to represent the village and the legal committee, would you select Bruce Torino as the most qualified person up here with his 46-year career, practicing attorney, with his experience level, to represent the village and the residents? Yes or no?
In addition to my representation on that committee, as well as the mayor's.
With you and Mary, the mayor, excuse me, on the board. That's all I'm asking.
Trustee Torino has the most relevant and deepest experience.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have any further comments, trustee Muldoon?
That's it, thank you.
Okay. With all due respect, trustee Muldoon and trustee Finneran, this has nothing to do with the amount of years of trustee Torino's legal career and what he may have done in the past. This is not a personal thing. I could, I can't make this any clearer. This is about misstatements made, okay? And things that you just don't do as a trustee, okay? If something was to be done to contact former trustee Flanagan's employer, we should have known about it. And I certainly, it had been discussed at that time, trustee Flanagan had gotten by far the most votes in the 2021 election. But to make a statement, and frankly, trustee Muldoon, if you had put hundreds of hours into something and someone would not give you credit for it and take it themselves, don't tell me you wouldn't be upset, because you would be.
All right, I'll just say little, but just a few words on this. Trustee Torino is on the legal committee for special projects. Everything I do up here is for the village and because of my deep commitment to the village. And it's serious, the appointments are serious, and past conduct, which you have heard some of, there's more than that, led me to feel that it was not in the best interest of the village to put him fully on the legal committee. I will continue to feel that way, but you can all vote as you wish. And it's not personal. I mean, that's the, this is, it's about the village. I do not, it's not a who you're friends with type of a decision, anything I do up here.
It's not personal at all. I supported trustee Torino when he ran for election for the first time, adamantly.
If, does anyone else have any other comments? I just have a couple. I practiced law a number of years ago and I served last year, I call it a term, last term with Charlie Kelly, who was a practicing attorney with a specialty, but as I think most of you know, was very bright and very perceptive and was a quick study. I have not practiced law for a number of years. I am motivated, like the seven of my compatriots up here, by doing what's best for the village. In this instance, I think it's clear that the committee needs Bruce Torino's expertise. It's unfortunate that there is, you know, noted personal animosity and there are significant and well-pointed out issues between the mayor and trustee Torino. Not good. It does not speak well necessarily about us. But us isn't what matters, you are what matters. And I know that we can use trustee Torino's expertise on a regular basis. I talk with the mayor quite often, as I do with everyone up here. As I'm sure you can tell from the hour and the discussion, this is a very chatty board and I think that's good. So I would welcome trustee Torino's expertise to protect you and to protect us and to make sure we have the best representation. And I will do everything I can, and I will buy boxing gloves for trustee Torino and trustee Flanagan, and I might put my money on Flanagan, but we will, we will make this work because that's what we have to do.
I just have to respond because the suggestion that this is like a personal battle is so inappropriate. My issues have nothing to do with me personally. It's about conduct and behavior and judgment, decisions that have been made that, that's the basis. It's not because of any personal animosity. I harbor none of that and that's not what this is about. This is a job serving the community and it's, it's not, it's, you know, there'll be no boxing or back and forth. I would also note that there's no requirement for a legal committee and I just want to, because some of the comments up here I think are a little misleading, we should not be giving legal advice on this committee. That's actually a horrible idea. We should be getting our legal advice from hired counsel for a host of reasons. So the idea, Vinnie, that you, you know, would get counsel from Bruce Torino is not the way. If you want legal advice on behalf of the village, it should always be with counsel that is retained because, for one reason, you have recourse if they're wrong. So it's actually important not to think you're getting legal advice from anyone up here. We are elected for our judgment, for making decisions and not to use our trade, you know, whether it's a lawyer or anything else. That is not at all the role we should be taking. So, but we can go ahead to the vote. So no.
Yeah, I just have a comment.
Really, okay.
I have to make another comment, I'm sorry. Trustee Finneran, I cannot reiterate anymore that this is not a personal, on trustee Torino.
Take all that back.
Okay? As I said.
Then correct it.
I supported him wholeheartedly when he ran in 2022 for trustee. I just have to say I'm bitterly disappointed on some of the events that happened, okay? I'm sure you're a good lawyer in terms of your own practice, but we all are here to serve the village. That's why we run. I mean, I could, I'm at the ninth inning of my insurance career. I could just take it easy. I don't want to. I want to do what's best for the village, okay? And that's why I feel this way. I just don't think it's, I don't feel comfortable with you on the legal committee and I'll leave it at that.
All right, so we can.
One quick comment, just, I have been to some meetings and I, I see that trustee Torino's experience and qualifications are unmatched on the board. And he really understands the laws and the pitfalls. I really believe his knowledge is crucial to this village before we vote.
Thank you.
You can vote.
I guess we have a motion, right?
Do you have the motion, what, your motion is to have Bruce Torino remain on the legal committee but without the designation of?
Legal committee without limitation.
All in favor?
Actually, I'm not sure what that, what that means.
Just a full member.
Full member, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay.
I have to abstain.
All opposed.
Okay.
All right, so are we done with the trustee comments?
Yeah, I'm done, yeah, thank you.
All right, so citizen comments on agenda items.
Hi, Thomas Ryan, 51 Pell Terrace, Garden City. It's an agenda item and a non-agenda item that I think are connected. And it's number 11, you're going to be paving Stewart Avenue. But there was an item, I guess a few months ago in the Garden City News that said we wanted to extend the lanes on Stewart Avenue, make actually make Stewart Avenue larger. Are we going to do paving and?
You, I'm sorry, you mean wider, correct?
Wider. In fact, I wrote a letter to the Garden City News, so we should make it just two lanes and not three lanes. So I'm saying, but now we're going to do paving. And it's almost like everything that goes on throughout the county even. We pave it and a week later, somebody's coming and tearing it up. So don't you think we should resolve the issue of widening Stewart or not widening Stewart before we repave Stewart?
We decided not to widen Stewart.
Absolutely.
That decision was made. We are not widening Stewart.
It was not a consideration, to be quite frank. What we are still considering, sir.
Well, I still, I think we should be considering condensing Stewart, make it two lanes.
Yeah, I.
He's going to.
And I think that should be, that decision should be made before we repave Stewart.
Well, what we do there, it's just a matter of striping. So the width of the road is approximately 30 feet on both the east and the west side. So there is a, an issue before the traffic commission on traffic calming, potentially taking both sides and making the eastbound side of Stewart between Franklin and Clinton two lanes until you get to Washington essentially, and then opening it up so as not to cause a backup. And then coming westbound from Stewart School toward CBS and narrowing that from three lanes to two lanes for most of that area. So that is being considered and we have taken the time, it's been on the table for a while. So on the 23rd, there's going to be a meeting here at 6:15 in the traffic commission and that issue will be resolved.
I think you said the middle lane and the paving is going to be done pretty soon.
Yes, yes, so the paving is separate from.
No, but the thing is that you're not going to put, you got to put lanes down regardless right after you do it, so.
We do, we have a.
You got to know what you're going to do before you're doing all the work. That's all I'm saying.
Well, we can, we're going to have just the perfect timing.
All right, and one other, my comment, I was going to make a comment that I thought have in the meeting on next Tuesday from 5:30 to 8:30. It really, they should have included that earlier in the day. In other words, not just 5:30 to 8:30. What about people who don't want to be out at night? It'd be nice if you could have had it from, say, 3 o'clock to 8:30. But then you said there was going to be a separate agenda with other people earlier in the day.
That's Monday and Tuesday.
Yeah.
Both days.
And what I would like to suggest is that whatever those other meetings are, that they should actually, that agenda should be publicized also.
So the, yeah, they normally do a two-hour kickoff meeting and we extended it to 3:00 to get, you know, earlier people who didn't want to be out late. So we went up to 5:30. I understand your point, but that was already an extension from a 2:00 to 3:00 and.
But I think you should publicize what the list is because, I mean, I read the Garden City News all the time and I never heard anything about having, inviting people for separate meetings or any groups for separate meetings.
Send an email to the St. Paul's, Bill Cavan is getting those St. Paul's emails. So if you know of groups who haven't spoken to him yet but want to get engaged, absolutely send an email.
And in listening to the meeting, just get me wrong, the head, you know, the flyer says the recreation master plan and St. Paul's use plan. But I understood, listening to the meeting, that the main purpose of the meeting was the St. Paul's master plan and not, the recreation master plan, excuse me, and not the St. Paul's use plan. I'm just saying, this looks confusing to me.
We're trying to keep it, it's a confusing path that we're on to get to a decision here and we simplified it as much as we can. I do think there'll be like some minimal input, like have your, at some of the tables. So there will be an area to put St. Paul's ideas in and give a little feedback, but it is mostly the recreation.
But what it's worth in listening to all the conversation, it does seem that Tuesday is too early for the meeting. I don't think it's ready, you're ready.
Too early for what?
It seems to me there's so much confusion. Just listening to all the discussion, it was very confusing. And all the different things about questions aren't ready and this one and that one. Tuesday's pretty close.
The first survey is ready to go. It'll be, it'll be there.
Good, I hope so.
Yeah. Thank you. Any other comments on agenda items in the room?
Kathleen Oral for Maryland. They have a piggybacking on Mr. Ryan's comment. Is there a meeting also going on Monday?
No, the only, the kickoff meeting, which is open to the public, is Tuesday from 5:30 to 8:30. They will be in town, they're landing midday on Monday, so they're available Monday afternoon and Tuesday during the day. And we're trying to schedule as many meetings as we can for them to have them engaging.
Okay. Next point. Having gone to, I'm dating myself, volunteer dinners that the village used to give to volunteer citizens at the casino. Parking was never one of your more convenient things around the casino. If you are hoping for hordes of people to come to this meeting, where can we park?
You know, Commissioner, can the police station lot be used during those hours, which is right there? The, not the railroad, Garden City train station lot.
Yes, because I don't have a parking permit, obviously.
We went out and forced the law, there's plenty of parking recently there, so we'll call off the hounds.
Thank you. So we can park in the railroad parking lot?
Yes.
And not have a lovely ticket? Okay.
Yes.
And I appreciate that. And just a total aside, one day last week, our new, shall I say, landscaping company, Bright View, is that the proper name of Bright View? Now, living where I do, and they, they had at least two trucks with many employees. They did a superior job around the little parking area that's across the street from my house. So my philosophy is you can't be in two places at the same time. So give them time with all the rain we've been having, many homes. I mean, I'm cultivating dandelions right now if anybody goes past my house, but the grass has grown a lot from one end of the week to another. So please, people should have patience, you know? Thank you.
Thank you.
Patience is a virtue.
Any other comments on agenda items? Yes.
Good evening. Genevieve Lockland, 123 Manor Road. When you've been speaking about the St. Paul's Committee that's been meeting, could you let us know who the people are? I know you had the Mayor's Advisory Committee, who did the polling of other recreation community around the metropolitan area, I guess, and some not. Are they still being charged with other responsibilities now in addition to that? And then who are the members of the Board of Trustees who are representing us and representing each other on the committee? And are there any other people who are going to be on that committee? And it would be nice to have all of this posted so we're aware of it.
Okay, so the, the steering committee, and I guess we can put that up. It is going to be somewhat fluid. Right now, we have the four trustees on it are myself, Trustee Fineran, Trustee Courtney, and Trustee Harrington. And then we have the five members of the Mayor's Committee, who have been working hard for quite some time now. Bill Cavan, Soraya Gage, John Cantwell, Jim Apostolides, and Walter Beal. And then we have Paul Blake, and we have Ralph Swazi.
All right. I would also suggest that all our Board of Trustee members are responsible for the whole St. Paul's project and recreation project, not just the trustees that are on the committee. And it seems to be advantageous if there was some way of having minutes or an agenda before all your meetings so that all the trustees are constantly up to date, because it doesn't appear that that happens. And I really think it's important, and it would be more transparent. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on agenda items in the room? Any comments on agenda items on Zoom?
I don't know if it's a long day. I don't know, maybe they've voted on it already, or maybe I just don't remember. Not yet, okay.
Yeah, it's cool.
No one on Zoom? All right, so we'll get to the approval of the minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the April 15th, 2024 Board of Trustees Meeting Executive Session? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that passes one, one abstaining, seven, four. Do we have a motion to approve the April 18th Board of Trustee Meeting Minutes?
Motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Do we have a motion to approve the April 29th, 2024 Board of Trustee Meeting Executive Session? All in favor?
Aye.
Right, that passes unanimously. And we'll move on now to new business on the formal agenda. We have a Board of Commissioners of Cultural and Recreational Affairs Resolution, and the board authorization is requested to change the Board of Commissioners of Cultural and Recreational Affairs as set out in the agenda, which is, should have been available to anyone. Notably, the change we're making is that the positions are now all at large, though we will aspire to have representation, at least one resident from each section of the village. So I'll ask if there's a motion to approve the resolution, amendment to Resolution 147 to 13, composition of Board of Commissioners of Cultural and Recreational Affairs as set out in the agenda.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. All right, and now we'll go on to some appointments we have for this evening, beginning with the mayor appointments for the ensuing official year. I'd like to thank everyone who has, we had a great outpouring of interest for these positions. Thank you, everyone. We are still filling positions, and when we're done, we'll make sure letters go out to everyone. But we are, I'm appointing today co-historians, Bill Belmer and Patty Seiler. I'm also making appointments to the Civic Beautification Committee, and we have in the room some of our members of the Civic Beautification Committee, which, including, I think, one of our founding members, and they've done excellent work for many years. Beautification is something that is so important to our village, as you hear from up here a lot. And we did have a lot of interest, and one area we saw interest in was trees, and there had been some discussion of how we harness that interest in trees and get residents involved to help with the tree program and education on trees. So I am making these appointments for the upcoming year, and it is an expanded Civic Beautification Committee, including three returning members as well as five new members. And some of those will be focused within this larger group. I have designated some chairs, seeing them as leading in different particular areas, maybe flowers, trees, landscaping. But the appointments are Althea Robinson, who's in the room as a co-chair. Thank you for all your comments and presentation. We have Maureen Lyons. I don't think she's in the room. We have Kathleen Oro, who's in the room. Thank you for your.
Thank you. Thank you for your dandelions.
We have Monica Kylie as a co-chair. We have Chris, I don't think, we have Chris Broder as a co-chair, and we have Betsy Andrew Medes, who's in the room. I know is passionate about trees, and I'm sure will do great things. We have William Kuehl, who has landscaping right here. Thank you. And we have Kate Schmidt, who was in the room. I think she stepped out, so thank you to all of you for volunteering, and I think it's an exciting time and a terrific committee.
Just have a technical situation here, folks. We'll be right with you.
So we have, on the Recreation Commission, we have John Deprich, who will be taking the CP vacated by Judy Courtney, which will extend until 2025. We have Ray Meyer, who will be filling a spot vacated by Tim Stapelford, which will expire in 2028. And he's in the room. Thank you, Ray. Have John Sardalis, who will be replacing the spot of Christina Russo, and that will be expiring in 2028. Then we have for ADRB, we're filling one vacancy that is.
Excuse me, I'm gonna recuse myself. Just, if there's any issues with conflict, so, thanks.
There you go. All right.
We have. For the ADRB, we're just making one appointment tonight to fill a vacancy that was created by Donald Hickey.
Was all that off? Okay, my microphone was off. So we have, just to quickly, is anyone on Zoom? We have two co-historians. We have the Civic Beautification Committee just announced, and Recreation, Don, three members, ADRB. We have Jean Matalmeier, who will be filling the vacancy created by Don Hickey in 2026. And actually, this is the only building department one. Can we go ahead and take the vote while Trustee Muldoon is out of the room? Do we have a motion to approve Jean Matalmeier for ADRB? All in favor?
Aye.
Right, and for the Environmental Advisory Board, tonight, we are appointing, or am proposing Amanda Shore to replace Molly Fiedler, and that term would expire in 2028. And I'm proposing Evelyn Fasano for a new term to expire on, in 2028. There are three additional volunteers who are going to be reached out to by our co-chairs in EAB, which is also a growing committee, and they're excited to appoint three, or include three additional trustees with expertise on subcommittees. So do we have a motion to approve the appointments to Recreation and EAB?
I'll move.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we're up to the consent calendar now. Do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar? All in favor? All right, we, the consent calendar is passed. And now we're up to citizen comments on non-agenda items. Are there any citizen comments on non-agenda items in the room? Come up to the podium.
Robert Hurris, 111 Cherry Valley Avenue. Last, last Friday, on Maria Barde Roma's morning show, Steve Moore said that wages in the public sector are 40% higher than similarly skilled workers in the private sector, while benefits for the public sector workers are 80% higher than those available in the private sector. I've highlighted these issues before in terms of how high wages are for municipalities like the village in comparison to the private sector. And the reason why I'm bringing this, pointing this up now is that evidently other people are concerned about this too. And Steve Moore cited a study, which I don't recall, that was the foundation for those numbers, which are rather glaring. 40% higher wages for comparable work and 80% higher comparable benefits. And the one important thing that he left out, which is an additional benefit for people in the public sector, is that the risk of them being laid off or fired is very, very low compared to people that work in the private sector. So now, the reason why this is important and timely, right now, for the Board of Trustees, is that you are currently either negotiating or about to start negotiating with several of your unions. And it's important for the village to gain concessions from the unions, similar to what Nassau County gained last year with the Civil Service Employee Association, which I believe is one of the unions that you're going to be negotiating with. Is that correct?
We will.
Yes. Yes, because I think the police were negotiated with last year. I already distributed to the Board of Trustees the memorandum of understanding of what Nassau County achieved in such negotiations with the Civil Service Employee Association last year, and I hope that you will be working to achieve some of those things. The next issue, which I did point out in my comprehensive report on the village's financials, is that the free rider issue on the village's health insurance plans needs to be addressed. And this is not an isolated issue for the village. It's typical with many municipalities where employees, spouses typically go on the village's plan, even if they could be covered by their employer's plan. And that results in higher costs for the village and a lot of cost shifting. Now, more enlightened municipal organizations require that surfing individual to either pay for the increased coverage or to have their employer pay. I highlighted those issues in my, the things that I sent to the village. Now, the, the other issue is that there are some commentators who believe that the two novel weight loss drugs, which are all the rage right now, will become as important to American society as the smartphone. And the reason why that's important to the village is that I think that your medical expenses will go up by about a million dollars a year over the near term, as these drugs are widely adopted, and that issue should be discussed with your unions in terms of what is covered and what is not covered. And right now, Medicare does not cover these drugs for weight loss. And then I'm, I'm almost finished, because I know brevity is not my strong suit. And, and I come by my, by it naturally, because you have not, the mayor Flanagan has met my mother, but most of you have not, and she can talk to anyone. And this concerns the bargaining contracts that are coming up. And I don't understand, or I don't know what input the Board of Trustees gets from either outside consultants or other advisors in terms of what to ask for in the negotiations and what kind of studies or data are used in terms of coming up with their stance in relations to the union. The other issue has to do with how, I don't know how many members, but I think at least one member of the Board of Trustees is in a labor union right now in terms of their job and what the board's processes for that individual's participation in these union negotiations. I know that the mayor recuses herself right now from certain matters. I think it relates to workers' compensation. Please correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I've been here where you've recused yourself about certain issues, so I don't know how this issue is going to be handled in terms of, we live in, in a very pro-union state in terms of the State House and the Assembly, and just recently, they passed an enhancement to the tier six in terms of increased benefits, which will be an additional cost for the village. Those are my comments. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Lardy.
Good evening. Steve Alardi, 139 Meadow. It appears for months, if not years, that the outside lights in front of the library are on 24/7. Is there a reason why that those aren't? I know there used to be at a timer. The timer doesn't work? Why someone can't hit the switch when it's dark and turn the switch off when they come in at eight, eight, nine o'clock in the morning? It's hard to tell, but those round globe lights are on all the time? And I believe possibly that the spotlight that's on the new sign on the corner as well.
I don't want to take any questions away from Mr. Barone. However, that was addressed many months ago, in which there is a program in place for the replacement of the doors to the library. All of the lighting is to be changed out to both LED and for it to go on photoelectric cells. So it only goes on when it's dark. So the answer is, your concern is well noted. Everybody knows it, and we're actually on it. Now, when it actually gets done, I will give back to Mr. Barone to answer that one.
Do we know why they're on all the time?
As far as I know, they are, they are on a timer, so we'll take a look at that to make sure that the timer is functioning properly. The light poles are on order. Once they come in, we will install them, and they are on photo, photo cells.
And, and just a, a comment. I, I saw the, the planters, or what will be planters when there's plants in them at the front of the building, the, the two that are up near the front doors seem like they're so wide apart that it wouldn't prevent somebody, some crazed person that we're trying to prevent from driving through the front doors. So if that's the purpose of them, I don't know if a, a third one needs to be put out in front of it, or they need to be moved slightly closer together or something, but they look like they're too far apart to prevent that, that crazed individual from barreling through the front doors.
No, that crazy individual is going to be an Uber coming from, or thinking they're coming to the Garden City Hotel but going to the library instead, which is exactly what happened. But there was a, a certain amount. But there was a certain amount of inquiry. The police commissioner and Mr. Barone did a lot of work figuring out where they are and to make sure that there's sufficient space for the mothers who have the triple-wide carriages and strollers. We'll double check it, though.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on non-agenda items?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, trustees. John Wilton, Chamber of Commerce. First and foremost.
John, excuse me, please, Mayor. I just want to make a quick comment just before you start. I think it's a good idea for this board to consider having John speak after all the executives speak, so he doesn't have to wait till this last hour. He's a big part of what the majority of residents want to hear, an update on the village, the businesses, what's going on, what's good, what's bad. And I think, I really think we should consider that. John, if you were okay with that, just an idea, don't shoot the messenger. But I do think it's a good idea because, John, I think the chamber is a huge part of this village. We need to continue to get everybody re-engaged again and get the chamber to be as good as it used to be, not that it's not good now, but really to support you guys, support the local businesses, and everybody work together. And I think you're a big part of that. And I know you spend an enormous amount of time and effort doing what you do. And I certainly need to speak for the majority of the board, if not all the board, that we appreciate that. And you know what? Keep up the good work. And I do think you should come up after the executives staff speak and at that time so it all flows together so we have all the business stuff out of here and you can actually get done earlier. So just my comment. Thank you very much.
Board feels it's appropriate. I certainly think it's a valid comment. I love spending my evenings here. First and foremost, Trustee Harrington, congratulations on your daughter's wedding. I'm sure it was a joyful day. Your Chamber of Commerce has been exceptionally busy. So I'm going to try to condense it as much as I can. I may go over the four minutes I'm allocated. I did meet with trustee Courtney and trustee Ty yesterday for about an hour and 10 minutes. We were going over the village event and the mechanics of the village event, the ideas and the concepts, and perhaps even the date being changed or whatever the case may be. I thought it was very productive. We went over the mechanical portions of it. We went over the animated portions of it. We went over the what-if portions of it and what we could do to make it as we so desire to make it more family-friendly. One thing I would say is if it's not going to be on June 7th for whatever the reason, the one thing we need to do is if we're going to do the poster contest for the kids, which is very important to the art departments, they actually get 283 posters. So if you're going to tie in the participation of the community, this, normally what happens is we put in a document that we produce and it goes into the backpacks of all the kids and goes home. So that's typically how the parents in the community get advised of it. So I would recommend that whatever the date is that you do it, if you're going to tie it into Belmont, it doesn't have to be Belmont. It could be a poster contest for a village, you know, a village-wide event or something. So that's somewhat important. I received, I had a visit today from the property owner of Doma Screen, and I also received a phone call within minutes after he left from Elliot in Florida, who owns where Madison Niche is. He wrote a check and mailed it yesterday to a company called Greenwood Corporation. And he orally represented to me that Garden City Pizza was doing it, Leos was doing it, and Starbucks was doing it. He was going to give them, and I was going to call you earlier, Ms. Wu, something about a bond. I don't know what he was referring to, but it was about the pavers. So I'll try to guide us as best I can in what I'm hearing. Doma Screen met with a village representative on Monday. And in his interpretation of what that village representative said was that the pavers for...
We're actually not going to discuss. If you want to make a comment, we're not discussing the pavers tonight at the meeting.
You can't.
You can say something, but we're not, there's no board...
No, no, I'm not, I'm giving you, I'm a mirror, I'm a reflection. I'm telling you what our business community asked me to speak about, okay? So this is important. This is affecting our downtown community and the people that pay our taxes and keep the value of our homes strong. So I understand we're not talking about it. This is germanely important, taking hours of my week every week to deal with this. So be that as it may, we collectively need to come up with a decision because there is mass confusion from the owners, from the tenants. I have to give comments of accolades to Mr. Barone and Giuseppe for being just wonderfully helpful in what's going on. But it's a level of insanity. I mean, they see it being power washed and the tenant is saying to the owner, well, if it's being power washed, why am I, you know, it's just a very confusing set of dynamics. No more needs to be said, but we do need to send something in writing to the owners of the property because they physically came to my office today. They're saying, John, I can't comply by the end of the month. And they think they need to comply because they think they're going to be fined. So please, I'm asking you as the board to understand, walk in their shoes. They're frustrated. I'm not encouraging them to come to me. They're coming to me because I guess they don't want to come to you. That's the best way I can sum it up. Anyway, that's enough about that talk. Newsday has contacted me three times about the promenade. My board, which is 21 people strong, have said, have them call the village. I'm ducking, bobbing, and weaving, okay, that's true, about the promenades and why and what for. Now, I get, this is the chamber phone, about the cancellation. In their mind, for whatever the reason, they think that the sitting government is the term they use, cancel the promenades, how come and why? And I said, well, that's not really true. We're doing something else. We're, you know, we're changing things. I'm trying not to answer it with an answer, okay? Channel 7 also called. Now, this is the third time, fourth time Channel 7 called. It's just one particular reporter trying to make her name for self. But be aware, I'm the buffer. I don't, if you want, I'll send them to you. That's a decision you have to make, but I'm fencing the call. The, I have so many notes and I'm not confused, I just have much to go over. The garbage situation, I know you spoke to TCBY today, okay? There's an issue as we get into warmer weather about the garbage shop on Seventh Street and the perception of the community, whatever the case may be. And frequently, or not all the time, there are not actual garbage bags in the pails. And unfortunately, when they go to take them, they have to dump them into the truck. And it's unfortunate because they can't clean them. TCBY, actually because it generates such big cups, really what they're doing at that point is, is he's taking them out during the day, putting them under the tree, and it's causing conflict. Some of the people in the community are complaining. Vinnie, I know you addressed it by putting in smaller bags, taking it through the store to the back, et cetera. We have newly painted poles in the village. As of today, I had black paint on my hand from them, which hopefully they'll all be relighted again. We had new posters made because we want to make the village beautiful again, so we made them in seven colors. You can see the back, ladies and gentlemen. And we made them pastel, which will be up for the summer. And we use the word hospitality intentionally. That was the logic behind it. They will go on the poles hopefully by tomorrow. We'll secure them. You may or may not know, these have become a red badge of courage for our youngsters. They were stealing them and hanging them up in their bedroom. Luckily, Mr. Barone and I have come up with an idea to somehow secure them so that these don't end up going into some, I don't know why, maybe it's little, it was far a faucet, not posters. But it is what it is. And I did speak with Giuseppe, cautionary tale, it's not the pavers, it's the street beautification program that's been going on since I had blonde hair. The, we have stray electricity from the Long Island Railroad, so I just want to refresh everybody's memory. We had a leak by Chase. We repaired, dug it up, chased. We had a leak down by People's Republic Bank. We had a leak down by Capital One. Then we had a leak down by Walk Street. Then we had a leak down by Leos. We repaired them, we fixed them. But when those leaks were repaired, we also sometimes had to repair the piping going into the building. So if we're going to, in a year and a half, make necessary repairs on the piping that's under the, of the infrastructure under the ground, I think that should be addressed. And I think that stray, I did speak with Giuseppe, that stray electric current that's going into the piping, because I actually had a gentleman the last time that this was going to take a volt meter and show me it's the volt meter spiked. So I think it's something that needs to be taken into consideration. We are getting, on average, normally I would say that I got 160 phone calls, I got 130 emails. I probably have gotten, probably in the last week, maybe 180, 200 phone calls from outside the community about the promenades. I have not posted it on the chamber website, and I've asked most of the people, have you gone to the chamber website? And they said, no. I said, how'd you get my phone number? Be that as it may, we have not promoted that it's canceled. So everybody outside of our realm, outside of the village realm, has no idea. And they're calling about, what's the name of the band? You know, what's the theme? What are the giveaways, et cetera? So I think, I'm not certain how we can address it. I'm not certain I want to put it on our website as a method of getting it out to the public because most of the public's telling me they're not checking the website. And then the only other thing Jessica and Judy and I discussed was when we're going to have this village event, when you're going to promote it and how you're going to get it out there. I highly recommend you put it in a paper two weeks, not one week. I think two weeks is very important that you do it. And that is it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilton.
Thanks, John.
Where is he going to be at our 23rd meeting?
I don't know. Talk about it after. Yes.
Yeah, my notes are top secret.
Oh, Susan, great job. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just said, I designed it.
Good evening, Robert Vesalotti, 32 Brixton. Good evening, Mayor and Board and Directors. And I have to admit, I agree, you should come first. It's the town. It's the business. And they are great for our village, so. Okay, so I'm here to talk about Long Island Railroad and the Maryland Avenue area. And it's a project that started in November of 2018. It's going to be five years this coming November. And we still have an issue of landscaping that has not been resolved, I don't think, monetarily for the village. And perhaps someone could correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we still are owed some money from the railroad or we're trying to determine some reimbursements there, number one. And number two, the light baffles that affect all the residents on Houston. I have a vested interest there. My daughter has a house there, a couple of houses from the tracks. As you come down Houston northbound, the light glare is still horrific. Same thing on Wellington as you head north. Roxbury's got a benefit because there was a test of the light baffles along the fluorescent lights there. These are the fluorescent lights along the platform. The lights are on the north side of the platform, but they affect the residents on the south side of the station. So they tested a section by Roxbury, and you come down Roxbury, and it's great. Now, it's no light glare, but the other streets still have a terrible light glare. So I'd like to hope that we are negotiating with the railroad. There's a new president there, Rob Free, who I think we should be sitting with, no one else. I don't, I think we should be sitting with Rob Free. And part of my reason for saying that is we're a very unique town in that we have so many stations, I think almost six or seven stations, if you count Mineola, that are in our town practically. We have bridges, I don't know how many bridges, and all of the crossings, right? So I really think that he needs to see our town as it's so uniquely railroad-driven, brought here by A.T. Stewart himself. So all I'm saying is that I don't expect answers tonight unless somebody wants to offer them, but there's the funding, there's the lighting baffles. And one last thing, which no one probably understands but me, because I pick up people there all the time, and that's the Green Ridge Traffic Circle where you pick up people over by New Hyde Park, sits up there by Hathaway Drive and all of that up there. When you go to pick someone up there, it's so narrow, people are driving over the curb and practically scraping the car next to them to negotiate that traffic circle. The traffic circle is way too narrow. And some of the sidewalks need to be extended because people get out, they go into the mud, or they come around to get in your car and they go in the mud. So I think we need to look at that traffic circle on Green Ridge and reconsider how that's designed, and even if we have to get some money from the railroad to help with that as well. Thank you very much.
Robert, I want to thank you for your help on the Main Avenue Committee. You're well aware of all these issues. And the light baffles, of course, yeah, that was a test on Roxbury. Part of the memorandum of understanding was they were going to be aware of light pollution. And that's been our argument with them. Robert Free is now the permanent president, so we're going to send him a letter. I have been talking to Hector Garcia, who's his right-hand or left-hand man, whatever you want to say. We have put in for, and Ms. Wu can elaborate further if I don't say, for a number of different things that we feel we should get reimbursed for. So we've done that. So it's a question of, you know, hearing back from them. The landscaping, we've kind of got that down pretty good, and we want to get that resolved as well. So we haven't forgotten about it. I pick my daughter up there all the time at Ride at Maryland, and that lights just, she thinks it's great that they're bright, but I said, no, the neighbors do not think it's great that it's bright. So, you know, we're working on that. As far as Green Ridge, they got hit really hard. I mean, you know, that poor woman, Mary Ann, she had piles of stuff, you know, for months right in her yard. So we cleaned that up, we got some trees. That'll be something else we'll mention, but the baffles are priority, sound panels are another priority, and hopefully we can finish this up, and that's what we're trying to do.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Yes.
Betsy Andromides, 116 New Market Road. Quick thing, I know we're all talking about lights and turning them off. Is there any way to get lights on out of here? When we leave this building, it's so dark and it's dangerous. That's all I want to say. And the Rangers won in overtime.
Thank you. Any other comments on non-agenda items?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. Andrew DeChamell, the Garden City in New York. Mr. Commissioner, I need your help with Chris Friedo. How many dozens of times have I complained to your department about his harassment of me? It doesn't stop. Any movement on my suggestion to ban dogs on Seventh Street from, between Franklin and Hilton? That's the village heart. Currently, it's a doggy toilet, okay? That's the heart of the village. It's like a parade of dogs. That's where they come. That's what they do there, okay? Belmont, I keep hearing Belmont, cheering horses as they run themselves to death. I mean, that's barbaric as bullfighting or cockfighting or dogfighting. That is insane, ridiculous. The promenade, homecoming, car show, they are all a dud. Do any of you folks ever attend? Sometimes I attend. I don't see any of you ever, okay? The promenade, face painting of little children, that is so sick, okay? Balloon twisting, ridiculous. Dogs everywhere, and I don't know else to say it. No disrespect, but the bands, they suck, okay? I said it softly, okay? St. Paul, I told you what to do three decades ago. Maybe the letter, maybe you never got the memo, okay? Maybe I'll find it, it's in my storage someplace, I'll find it, I'll resubmit it. But three decades ago, I told you what to do, okay? St. Paul's. You want something widely supported, where everybody can contribute, not just support, but contribute, okay? Movie production studio funded by donations, not the village by donations, okay? As an example, okay, well, let's say high school students to come up with stories and to write the script. And Mayor, if I was in charge, I could make you a star. And can I have your autograph right now to beat the rush? That was St. Paul's. Mayor, did you receive my May 4th letter to Lieutenant Walsh and my April 26th letter to you?
I've received letters. I don't have the dates, but I likely did.
Okay, okay, okay. Did you get a chance to review the folder of letters I gave to you at the last board meeting?
I have reviewed your letters.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very, very, very much, okay? Has there been any conversation on my request for reparations restitution?
That's not something I can comment on.
Well, can I, can't comment? So you want to like talk about it later on or, I mean, did I find out what's happening? Because if you read those letters, I think you will understand and appreciate the ordeal I went through for one year and five months. That one year, imagine if you had to listen to me every night for one year and five months, just for four minutes, you'd go crazy. For one year and five months, what I described in those letters was, that wasn't all of it. That wasn't all of it, but everything was accurate that I documented, okay? That was something over nothing, nothing, complete mishandling. That was something over nothing, nothing, complete mishandling of a complaint. And I, I allege a little collusion or whatever, criminality on the part of the parties involved. Okay? I think I'm entitled to something. Okay? And this is not the first time. Okay? I mean, there's been a lot of episodes. I wish, well, whatever, not to go into it right now, but in my storage unit, I got boxes of documents of court documents from me and from everybody about ridiculous accusations that I had to battle. Mr. Chamel, you have a possibility of bringing a lawsuit against the village, and I don't think that this should be discussed in public. Can I discuss with you, Mr. Gary Fishberg? Mr. Fishberg? Can I discuss with you, like maybe, I mean, I, I want to know if I have a standing, that's all. I just want to know, I think I'm entitled to something and I, I, I'd like to discuss it with somebody, just, just to know.
Your four minutes is up, so. Thank you for your...
Well, Mr. Fishberg, would you entertain my request to speak with you at some future? No.
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 All right. Any other comments on non-agenda items in the room? Any comments on Zoom on non-agenda items?
Hello, good evening. Can you hear me? Hello?
Can you hear us, Mr. Oros?
Yes, I can. Yeah, I got a question. My wife and I, we, we like to walk around the village. Obviously, it's a very nice place to be. But we're finding out that they, especially, they live in the east, that the street, the trees over here seem to be disappearing.
You were just unmuted. If you want to restart that, I'm sorry, we couldn't hear you until just now. There's an issue on our end.
The trees in my area seem to be disappearing. And I'm wondering whether, I spoke to a couple of residents and apparently the residents had asked the village to take them down and not be replaced. I mean, is it that easy to do? I mean, due to the fact that the trees are not really theirs, they're, they happen to be on village property.
We didn't catch your name at the beginning, but just for the record, is this Bob Oros?
Yeah, Bob Oros. Yeah, 28 Grove. Yeah.
Okay. Thanks. All right, so your question is about the trees. Yep.
Yeah, I'd like to know why, why it seems to be so easy to take a tree and not replace it.
I'll let Mr. Blake speak to that. I know that's, it's something we're hearing many, many complaints about because there have been lots of the tree-lined streets across the village. So I'll let, and I'll let Mr. Blake discuss.
We do not just take trees down. Every tree that is requested to come down is inspected by either our arborist or one of our tree pruners. For a tree to be taken down, it has to either be in decline or diseased or dead, or it has to be interfering with a sewer line, a gas line or a water line. We, we always try to replace trees when we take trees down, but there are some residents that do not want trees replaced in front of their homes. I don't know any specific instances you may be referring to, Mr. Oros. I know there was a tree taken down on Tremont, I believe, Willow, that had incurred into the sewer line outside of the roadway. It had also lifted the curb. The sidewalk end was starting to lift the roadway. That one was taken down. The only other reason trees would be taken down again is if they are diseased or dead. Every tree that is taken down is inspected by either the arborist or one of our pruners. We, we don't just take trees down when people ask for it.
Unfortunate because we're going to lose the name of Garden City. Because the garden's going to be gone. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for your comment. We are all focused on the trees in the village and working to increase that number.
I think one thing I want to point out is that to get the tree replaced, the resident would need to make a request. Is that correct? So it doesn't automatically happen?
Typically, when we take a tree down, we will contact the resident to see if they want another tree. But we also take requests from residents. I've had two or three this week where they just called the office and asked for a tree. We're always happy to oblige.